All right, I'm going to call the special town meeting order, meeting to order. And we're going to start with the pledge, but first, we're going to continue with our tradition of honoring someone special in our community. Everyone may recall at the end of May town meeting, we ended with John Hall letting us know about a special retirement at the library. Well, tonight, we are honored to have Michelle DeGrazio join us to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Michelle, and I find this hard to believe, and when you look at Michelle, you find this hard to believe as well, she started at the library as a page when she was 14. She would have started younger, but she couldn't get working papers before that, so it's good to know that the library is keeping everything legal. And she retired this year after 52 years as the head of the circulation department. She remains very active in town and can often be seen on law walks. Michelle, thank you for serving our town. And please honor us by leading us in the pledge. If everyone would please rise, and the flag is over there.
To the flag. United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So on the heels of the pledge, I don't know that we can top that, we're just, we just celebrated Veterans Day, and I would like to ask all our veterans who are present to stand so we can thank you for your service. Sadly, since we last met, we lost two town meeting members. District one member Francine Fitzgerald passed away in July, and district five member Cindy Wong Shaughnessy passed away in May shortly after town meeting. I still think of Cindy sitting right in the front row, as she always did. Please join me in a moment of silence in memory of Francine and Cindy. May their memory be a blessing. All right, before we start off, I have a quick announcement from our good friend Debbie Homewood, who's looking right at me and saying, you better make that announcement. Everyone knows the swap shop, huge success out at the landfill. The swap shop will remain open through the winter first Saturday of each month, so please bring, bring down whatever Debbie will check it out, but Debbie needs some help. So also looking for volunteers, so if you're interested in helping with this, this great cause, and by the way, they are going gangbusters, really reducing waste in our town, which we'll be talking a lot about tonight with several articles. So please see Debbie if you're interested in helping out with the swap shop, and I know that she will welcome you with open arms. So a few reminders for everybody, very quickly. First off, as you remember, when you are recognized, you address me as Madam Moderator. I don't normally like to be called Madam, but this is one of the few nights a year where it's allowable. It's not Ms. Moderator, it's not Mrs. Moderator, it's not Mr. Moderator. Per town meeting time, it's actually Madam Moderator. When you are called on, if you are a town meeting member, please state your name and your district you're representing. If you're not a town meeting member but a registered voter, give your name and address. And if you're a spokesperson for a group affected by an article, please state so. Please stand when recognized and wait for the mic runner. Thank you, Kevin. He's ready, ready to go to battle. We'll bring a mic to you. If you are in this front section here and you are able, please just walk up to this mic here, it'll save us some valuable time, as much as possible, we'd love for people to walk up to the mic. The sponsor of a proponent or proponent of an article has 10 minutes to speak. If it's a presentation by groups that have been coordinated with me in advance, it's 20 minutes total. Subsequent speakers are limited to five minutes each, if you'd like to speak on an article. And anyone can be granted a one-time extension by the body. Again, any registered voter in Norwood can speak, but only elected town meeting members can offer motions and vote. And please make sure you are prominently, and I see people doing a great job of this, wearing your badge, your town meeting badge, so we know that you should be counted in the votes. The order of business is after the proponents of the article speak, I will call on any registered speakers, then call on anyone who wants to speak from the floor. No member speaking on an article may close by moving the question, and no registered speaker can move the question per our rules. As a reminder, we're all on live TV, thanks to Norwood Community Media, and thank you to the team that's here tonight. And because we are always rushing to get out of here, I just want to give some quick thank yous up to the top of each session, that a big thank you to the general manager's office, everybody affiliated with that, the finance department, we have a new face up here for town meeting, joining, joining the ladies of the, ladies of the stage, obviously the town clerk's office with everything that they do, high school custodians and the building staff as well. So with that, I declare special town meeting now in session. And Mr. Lane, I believe we are going to you for the first motion.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Moved that the town vote to amend Article 34 of the bylaws of the town of Norwood as printed in the warrant, less the phrase, or take any other action in the matter.
On the article?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. As some town meeting members may recall, pre-pandemic, there was a town meeting rules committee report that made the recommendation to move towards electronic voting. Because of the pandemic, this wasn't something that we got to in a timely fashion, we're revisiting that now, so this article would change our bylaws. The first section is to clean up a little bit of the language. Currently, our bylaws depict a badge with your face and your district, it's not what we're wearing, so we want to clean that up. And the second piece of this article is to add the use of electronic voting devices and show of hands as methods of taking votes in the first sentence of the first paragraph, so that said first sentence shall read, you can read it yourself. Yeah, so moving from taking counts or manual votes to everyone having an electronic device. Nothing further.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lane. We're very fortunate in this town to have our town meeting rules as part of our bylaws. So what Mr. Lane is referring to is amending Article 34. And again, I think we're going to get a bit of a Roman numeral tutorial tonight with some of the articles, we have a lot on the bylaws. On the motion, any discussion? All right, seeing none, let's put it to a vote. All those in favor of amending Article 34 of the bylaws of the town of Norwood as printed in the warrant, less the phrase, or take any other action in that matter? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries, this is a majority vote. Article two also having to deal with our bylaws and driven from some work done by the town meeting size committee appointed by the Board of Selectmen that are sitting, sitting amongst us. Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Moved that the town vote to receive and accept the report of the town meeting size committee, and further to amend Article 1, Section 2 of the bylaws of the town of Norwood as printed in the warrant, less the phrase, or take any other action in the matter.
On the motion, Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. In February of '22, the Selectmen formed the Town Meeting Size Study Committee, which met subsequently over the next year, plus to take a look at what might be an appropriate amendment to the number of town meeting members for town meeting. As some of you know, you know, we have struggled with, with keeping up with filling those seats, and because of the 2020 census, that number was increased, the bylaws, it's currently written, is, is a ratio that increases if the, the voting population increases and decreases otherwise. So the town meeting size committee met and had 12 public hearings and also produced a report, the Selectmen all received, and they presented their findings at a meeting. And as you can see in your yellow sheet, the recommendation was to move from 297 seats, which is what the new census numbers would entail, to 261, so a decrease of 36 seats. That's a result in 29 seats per district as opposed to 33. This change would eliminate 28 seats, 28 most consistently unfilled seats. Thank you.
All right. I do have one registered speaker on this, Mr. Hearn, I believe you registered to speak.
I was a member of the committee, and Mr. Lane has explained it for the most part. We have in our charter and in our bylaws a requirement that the number of town meeting members is a percentage of the registered voters, not the, not the population, but registered voters. And with the increase in registered voters, we went up, as Mr. Lane said, to 297 people. We haven't been able to fill that. I personally think that having a number so high that it becomes difficult to fill the number does, is a disservice. And we discussed this, we got a lot of data from the town clerk's office, data from other We, Ms. Groh in particular, was our guru when it came to the, all of the information and helping to put it in understandable form for us. The other committee members also contributed greatly on it, and I want to thank the moderator for sitting in at most of our meetings and helping us and offering some really good comments as we went along. Also, the town clerk was part of the committee, and Mrs. Folen, we couldn't have done it without her, as most things, we can't do without her. Anyway, the idea of one and a quarter percent is something of a compromise, but it brings us to 261 members. The problem is that the population going up will keep changing our numbers, and we might get back up the next time there's a census to some high number that isn't really suitable. At some point, we may want to look at a different way of calculating how we do our, pick our members or determine the number of members, but in any event, this is a change that makes sense and will help us to hopefully get a number that will elect people and not leave us with 20 or 30 seats unfilled after every election, or after the last couple of elections. So I urge a yes vote on it, and I want to thank the committee members who really pulled the laboring oar on this, and Ms. Sobchak did a great job in her presentation to the Selectmen a couple of months ago, so I thought she was coming up here tonight to talk, but apparently I've made a rash comment to the moderator that I was available. Thank you.
All right. Any, Mr. Krasner?
Will Krasner, District Four. The only question I have is, there's no reference in the article to the census in terms of measuring the registered voters, so is that, I'm wondering about that, because that would mean if next year the population goes up to 2,000, we may have to recalculate, so I, I'm wondering why we didn't reference the census.
Do you want to take that? Or, okay, we'll let...
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I probably misspoke.
Yeah, yeah.
It has happened before.
Ms. Groh?
Thank you, Madam, is this working? All right, here we go. Thank you, Madam Moderator. For clarification, the thing that is affected is the registered voter quantities, not population raw, and so that quantity of people doesn't tend to change much. The primary thing that caused a big jump for us was the fact that automatic voter registration has caused a lot more people to be registered perhaps than in the past, but that number tends not to ebb and flow nearly as much.
And again, the census is not taken every year, so to your point, Mr. Krasner, that the census is only every 10 years? Every 10 years. So it was a reset and a large reset. Mr. Hofcroft? We'll just, we'll just go along that road.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. How does this affect the...
Mr. Hofcroft, I think we all know who you are, but would you mind identifying yourself, please?
Francis Hofcroft, District One. How does this affect the quorum necessary for a town meeting?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
How does this affect the quorum necessary for a town meeting?
So the quorum right now, right now, our membership is actually 261 filled seats, so it's exactly, this will keep it exactly where it is. The quorum is separate, that would be 132, so it's 50% plus one.
Thank you.
Mr. Brody, we'll, we'll keep going.
Steve Brody, District Four. Now, I'm very concerned that reducing the number of town meeting members will reduce the representation of the citizens and registered voters of Norwood. I am against the motion, and I think we should keep it the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brody. Ms. Taylor? Whoop, wait for the mic, he's coming.
Jean Taylor, District... Steve, we eliminated empty seats. There were empty seats that we eliminated. Does that help you? No? Seats don't vote. Empty seats couldn't vote.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
You're very welcome, Madam Moderator.
In the back there?
Carol McClyde, District Eight. If this is by registered voters, if the, if the number of registered voters changes every year significantly, then would all of the town meeting members have to run every year if there would be a change?
No. So we only reset this every 10 years in line with the census, and the way the article is, I might also mention that in the motion, you see that we're not looking, this article would not take place until 19, 2025, so a year from this coming May. So when we had to reset town meeting, everybody who ran then would have to run again in May of 2025, so April of 2025, sorry. Sorry, Madam Clerk, I'll get it. So it actually, you're going to, it won't change anything from having to run again. So in other words, you won't have to run every year. In the back over there?
Thank you, Katie Button, District Nine. Are there currently any districts that have full membership, meaning all the seats were full, so this decision will eliminate town meeting members that could potentially run?
Actually, there is no district that is totally full. The closest that we come is District Six, which has 32, but most are at 30, 28, and we actually have one district that's at 23.
So for clarification, there are districts that will lose seats even though right now they are full?
No, they won't lose seats. What this does is reduces every district to 29 seats, so we always, again, that's one of the things that the census does, is to make sure that we evenly disperse the seats amongst all the districts. And in fact, one of the things that happens, and it happened to several people, including Mr. Hearn, is his district changed as a result of the census in order to keep it even. So every district will have 29 seats if this passes.
Okay, I don't think I'm phrasing this correctly. So if District Six right now has 32 people sitting in this room, and we change the article so that only 29 people can run for those seats, we would essentially lose three town meeting members from District Six?
Yes, but you would still have 260, you'd still have the same number of town meeting members.
Yes, I understand. Okay, thank you.
Over in the corner, Kevin?
Hi, I'm Simon Tuckman, District Two. My question is if there's a downside to having open seats. Does it affect our quorum or anything else?
So, Mr. Lane, do you want to take that rather than me taking that, or I could certainly take it?
Sure, I was just going to add, Madam Moderator, that in terms of numbers, so the number of town meeting members that are here this evening is 163. So that's what 163 looks like. And in terms of having empty seats, I think it's just something we've, we've struggled with since I've been a town meeting member for, for 10 years, and I mean, I think that this, the direct answer to your question is, you know, potentially you have less representation for those districts, but again, it's something that we've struggled with for a pretty long time. So again, this, 163 people here tonight, if this goes through, the number would be 261. Would we ever get 261 in this room? That would be great, but I'm not sure the last time that happened.
Brian Palmetier, District Eight. I just, I have a little bit of confusion about the third paragraph on page two under this, where it talks about, we have 268 representatives that were elected in the most recent, but they're, we're looking to change it to 269, which by reck, my reckoning means that's going to be seven fewer people. Am I reading that right?
So if we had every district in the last election, we should have had 297.
Right. And here it says that in the most recent town election, 268 representatives were elected, which left 29 seats unfilled. But then it says currently there are 261 filled seats, so I'm trying to figure, did we lose seven people since the election?
Yes.
Okay, so these are people that were elected but chose not to serve, or for some other reason?
Yeah, or some other reason. So I unfortunately just had to announce two that are, other people have moved, have left town, other people have resigned as town meeting members, so we have lost seats.
Got it. So we would be reducing this to exactly the number of people that have filled seats now, but some of the, but some of the districts would, would end up having fewer people that you're saying some, by reducing it by 29 per district, some of the six would lose their, if they have 30 people now serving, or 31 people now serving, they would lose those extra two?
That's correct.
I haven't heard an explanation as to why decreasing the size is a benefit. If somebody could explain that, and it seems to me that you'd want to encourage more people to participate. If somebody could just explain that to me, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Lane, do you want to take that?
I'd be happy to, or if someone from the committee wanted to speak to it, that's fine too.
Ms. Sobchak, do you want to? I, I think you, your arrival has been mad.
Hello? Is this working? Amy Sobchak, District Four. We spent a lot of time trying to discuss and trying to determine, you know, what was really the best way to do this, or if there was a need to do this. We looked at exorbitant amounts of information and data, and we have never, ever had a full town meeting, elected slate. We don't get, even if when we have people filling the districts, they don't show up. So we felt finally, after a year of meetings, that we needed to go with what the data was telling us, and the data was telling us that shrinking the number was not going to impede any sort of ability for the town members to participate in the government. We would love it if more people would come out, and there would be contested races even, to raise awareness about what's going on in the town. Unfortunately, we, we don't see that currently, and maybe this will spark some more interest in, in some participation with the, the town meeting members. I don't know if that answers your question or not, but...
Mr. Hall?
John Hall, District Six. Couple of technical questions. Is the formula for the quorum written in the bylaws? You mentioned it's 50% plus one, is that in the bylaws?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any reason why the bylaws couldn't include the year of the census, which is used to anchor particular changes in the numbers? Even though it's not based on the census, it could be based on that year. That way you know that you're only adjusting the number of registered voters every 10 years, and you could say, and that will become effective and give yourself a couple of years afterwards.
Is that a question you're praising?
Yes, yes, it was meant to be, sorry.
Sorry, I'm following that. Who likes to take that?
I think, Madam Moderator, maybe perhaps someone from the committee could answer that question.
All right, Ms. Sobchak's got it again.
Off the top of my head, I don't remember what exactly is in the bylaw, I don't have my paperwork with me, but there is, there were two different acts going at play, and one of the reasons why we chose to just change this part of it was because this could be done locally. There's a special act that also comes into play that has a lot of other things that are going on that we had also recommended to the Selectmen that they may want to have. going on that we had also recommended to the selectmen that they may want to have. Another committee formed to take a look at the special act. But this was the way that we could effect the reduction without having to go to the legislature to have any sort of further time, in the essence of time, basically, to do this. So that's why we chose to just do the 1 and 1/4 percent. And we did put in a recommendation to take effect in 2025. So that was part of it. But the rest of it does have ties to the special act.
Okay, I, I think that explains why it can't be done in the bylaws. But there's no reason it couldn't be a standard practice, and I'll leave it there. Now, several of the questions, and I have similar questions, are, what's the impact on the current people who have decided to turn out and participate? I think the earlier questioner was right in saying that the number of empty seats is probably not the same from district to district, and it wouldn't be difficult for us to be in a position where in order to bring it down to 29 for each district, somebody who's showing up as a district, as a town meeting member, will not fit on the ballot. There are ways of seeing that they're on the ballot, but not all of them can be reelected. I think this is a one-time effect, though. It's a transitional effect, and it's like you can't do all the good things at once. And I'm okay with that. I don't know how others feel. But I do have one question related to that. Are the districts all of equal population size?
Yes.
Okay. In that case, I'm done. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
You're welcome. All right. Mr. Gertie, I've already called on you, so I'm not going to call on you again in the back there.
Patrick Gertie, District 4. The only way that we know registered voters in the town is through the census, which is done every 10 years. Is that correct?
Registered voters is, we always know who the registered voters are every year.
Okay.
The census, the census aspect has to do with the evening out the population of the districts. So to what Mr. Hall was just referring to, are the districts all even in population? That's what the census does. It evens it out. We do know, we know the registered voters every year.
In 10 years, though?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought it would be better if there was another way of finding registered voters that decide the percentage of where it would be.
I don't think I'm following you, sir. Registered voters, we know at any moment in time. The clerk's office keeps track of the registered voters and its real-time information.
So couldn't that be done every year for town meeting to confirm what size come up to election, other than the census?
It's, for the purpose of the resetting of town meeting, that only happens in conjunction with the census. We would not, we're not talking about changing town meeting every year to be 1 and 1/4 or 1 and 1/2 percent. We don't do that today. We only do it every 10 years when there's a new census. Because it's a twofold thing. It is the percentage of registered voters, but it's also the districts which are set by the census every 10 years.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? All right, all the way in the back.
Hello, Maria Lopez, District 9. So my two-part question is, so if there was a lot of meetings to figure out how to bring the count down, why aren't we trying to discover why people who participated and became town meeting members are not coming to the events? What's discouraging them from participating in town meeting? Why did they take the time to run for election but feel somehow they're not valued, or whatever it is, that they're not here? So there has to be a reason why they're not seeing value in participating in the meetings. Number two is that I feel like with the way Norwood is going through a rejuvenation phase, we've got a lot of new families. I don't know if we're recruiting people enough to tell them what the value is in participating in the meeting. So maybe the investment should be into how to recruit and how to educate people in participation, as opposed to just looking at it and saying, well, let's reduce it because people aren't participating.
Does anybody from the committee want to respond to that, or Mr. Mazuka?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Just to that point, a couple of facts that I think help frame the discussion. One is, it is entirely possible that the size of our body is just generally too big. 260 is large for town meetings. 300 is very large for town meetings. We looked back at present and voting over the last 20 years. There were only two town meetings in 20 years that had 200 people or more. Both were high school votes. We've had under 200 people voting at every town meeting for the last 20 years. We've gone back to the '60s, and around 150, 160 people seems to be consistently over a half century, just the number of people that consistently show up to town meeting and vote. First night of annual town meeting is a high number. It usually hits 180s, 190s, and then it drops down to around the middle. That's not to say we couldn't do more in trying to encourage folks, but several decades worth of history show that this is about 160 is about what show, the number of people that arrive to town meeting and vote at town meeting.
Mr. Connolly? Do I have a second? All right, Mr. McFarland. The question has been moved. That's non-debatable. Takes a 2/3 vote. All in favor of moving the question, say aye. All opposed, say no. Question is moved. That takes us back to the main motion. That the town vote to receive and accept the report of the Town Meeting Size Committee and further amend Article 1, Section 2 of the bylaws of the Town of Norwood as printed in the warrant, less the phrase, or take any action in that matter. So again, this is changing our bylaw to go from 1 and 1/2 percent of registered voters to 1 and 1/4 percent, to go into effect on April 7, 2025. All those, and it's a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. All right. Clearly by voice vote, Madam Clerk, I'm going to say it's 100 to 38. Well, let me, I'm actually going to amend that. It's much more than that. It's 120 to 18. Do you have a point of information, Mr. Hearn? Oh, it's a majority vote, yeah. That was my bad. I don't need a number. Thank you, Mr. Hearn. Caught up in the moment. And, you know, one of the things that's interesting for me is I have two former moderators sitting here. So when the chief talks about the weapons that have the little red dot that are hitting you, I kind of feel like that sometimes when I'm up here on the podium. My apologies, majority vote, clearly that passed. Article 3, Mr. Lane?
Move that the town vote to amend the general bylaws of the Town of Norwood by deleting Article 17, Permanent Building Construction Committee in its entirety, and replacing it with a new proposed bylaw as printed in the warrant, less the phrase, or take any other action in the matter.
And Mr. Donnelly is seconding.
Yes.
All right. On the motion.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Since the creation of the Facilities Department in the spring of 2020, the Permanent Building Committee has not been assigned any projects. That's not to say that they weren't capable and didn't do good work. It's just that the Facilities Department has taken on more of the types of projects that perhaps the PBC would have taken in the past. Additionally, some of the larger, bigger ticket item projects, like the new middle school, and a committee, the Middle School Building Committee has been formed to handle that project. Also, any project in town that's over $1 million would require the town to hire an OPM, an owner's project manager. So we felt like this was a good time to amend this bylaw. It does not get rid of the PBC. It just leaves the discretion of the manager and the selectmen to town meeting, to appoint the Building Committee for a project, should one be deemed appropriate. Certainly can take questions. I know Mr. Plasko is also well-versed on this, and the initial article came from Mr. Hopcroft, and I'm sure he has comments.
Or maybe not. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Greeley?
Joe Greeley, District 6. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Two points. One, Chairman Lane said that the, you know, this is not a comment about the previous Permanent Building Committee members. I will, since I have the microphone, I will commend, there's a few of those members in the audience tonight. I think that was one of the committees that got the least, the least amount of attention, certainly the least amount of attendance in their meetings. But I, in my estimation, it's one of the committees that if you look back over the last 30 years, they had, they were managing a significant amount of money, and in my opinion, they did an amazing job with the resources they had in managing as many projects as they could. So I do want to commend the members of the committee that are here tonight and all those who have served previously. As somebody who did attend, for a number of years, I was the liaison between the Finance Commission and the Permanent Building Committee. And I always felt welcomed, and I always felt that I could walk into the meeting, get caught up on any specific project, and certainly ask questions to try to educate myself on a specific topic or a specific project. And my question to the advocates of this article is, moving forward, how would I, or how would someone, maybe in this order, attend a meeting, find out about the status of a specific project, provide feedback for that project, or just generally keep a pulse on the array of projects that the committee is managing? So, thank you.
Who wants to take that? Mr. Mazuka?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you to the member. So the PBCC hasn't actually met in several years. If you think of the timeline of when we established our PBCC, going back, the first 20 or 25 years, we probably built half a dozen school buildings. We've built several critical facilities since then. But really, what the PBCC has done the last 10 years or so is some minor renovation projects that are mostly managed by the Facilities Department. So if you have questions about any of those capital projects, by all means, reach out to the Facilities Department. If we were to, let's say, build a new town hall, a new DPW building, those buildings are obviously existing, and a committee is established, it would follow the same process as a construction committee normally follows. There's just no permanent standing committee. We're just not building as many new buildings as we used to. And I know everyone's thinking about the middle school, but the state has a separate required statutory framework for the middle school. All of our capital projects that go through Capital Outlay, every month, an update is set to the Finance Commission and the Board of Selectmen on status of those projects. We've been more than happy to share that with anyone.
Thank you, Mr. Mazuka. Seeing, oh, Mr. Hall.
John Hall, District 6. Filling in details in Mr. Mazuka's last comments, I think it might be well if the department were to develop a protocol for getting in touch with people who predictably should have some comment but may not be inclined to bring it forth without an invitation. I'm thinking of abutters, a future of abutters, as an example of that. They usually surface at a point where they should have been listened to earlier, but despite all the best intentions, it didn't happen. This is by way of a suggestion. The other part is, I'd like to offer a motion to turn Mr. Greeley's commendation to the Permanent Building Committee into the sentiment of this entire body. And I would like to move that we commend the Permanent Building Committee for their years of excellent work and their contributions to Norwood.
Do we have a second on that, Ms. Homewood? I'm going to put it to an immediate vote. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. All right. That was a quick, maybe illegal, motion, Mr. Hall, but we did it anyway. It's the spirit. On Article 3. I don't see any other hands, so let's put it to, whoop, I'm sorry, in the back. I just want to mention, when you sit in the back, you run the risk that I can't see you, so...
Jamie Singlis, District 9. I was wondering, for the language, would it be possible to, like, remove the gender language and just make it gender neutral?
Can you repeat the question? We're having difficulty hearing you up here.
Sure. In the article, there are a couple of places where it uses his/her, and I was wondering if it's possible to remove the gender language and replace it with their.
Mr., Mrs., Mr. Plasko says he will take that.
I'm not sure what you're reading, but if you look at your warrant, the proposed article, I think it is gender neutral. For example, it says the Director of Facilities, or his or her designee.
Right, so that's the gendered part.
And I think it kind of reads that way throughout the document.
So his and her is gendered, and I'm suggesting we replace it with their, which includes other people.
So we'll take that under advisement. How's that? Because it's a whole bylaw revision.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no other hands raised, let's put this to a vote again. This is Article 3, that the town, and it has to do with amending Article 17 of the bylaws by the town, by deleting Article 17, Permanent Building Construction Committee in its entirety, and replacing it with a new bylaw as printed in the warrant, less the phrase, or take any action in that matter. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Article 4, Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Move that the town vote to amend the general bylaws of the Town of Norwood by adding a new article, interest on overdue bills for police details and fire details, as printed in the warrant, less the phrase, or take any other action in the matter. The number of the new article shall be assigned by the town clerk.
On the motion. Oh, and Mr. Donnelly is seconding, I believe.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. As indicated in the Yellow Sheet, this would allow the town to charge interest on detail bills. We do sometimes require police and fire details for different commercial projects, and occasionally there are vendors that are late in getting the money back to the town. By law, we have to pay out the salary for that police officer or firefighter within two weeks, so we're just making sure that we give, have some teeth to make sure we get paid on time, so we're not fronting the money and losing the value of that money sitting in the town's bank account.
And Madam Clerk, do we know what article number this will be? If, I think it may be 50. If, it'll be lucky 50 if we do add this. 51? Anything on the motion? Seeing none, let's put it to a vote. This is a simple majority. All those in favor of amending the general bylaws by adding a new article, interest on overdue bills for police details and fire details, as printed in the warrant? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Article 5. Now, we have two articles having to do with the proposed tax financing agreement. Article 5 is for a new TIF, and Article 6 is to amend the existing... Article Five is for a new TIF, and Article Six is to amend the existing TIF due to an address change. Let's start with the motion. Mr. Lane.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Moved that the town will vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter Forty, Section Fifty-nine, and Chapter Twenty-three A, Sections Three A through Three F, and the applicable regulations there under Two. A, approve tax increment financing agreement between the town, FM Global, and Nippon's River LLC for property shown on Assessor's Map Fifteen, Sheet Fifteen, Lot Seven, which TIF agreement provides for real estate tax exemptions over a 20-year period at the exemption rate schedule set forth therein. And B, authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute a TIF agreement and any documents related thereto, and to approve submission to the Massachusetts Economic Assistance Coordinating Council of the TIF agreement, and any documents related thereto, all relating to the project as described in the TIF agreement, and any necessary documents relating thereto and related submissions, and to take such other actions as necessary or appropriate to implement those documents and carry out the purposes of this article. I believe-
And Mr. Donnelly is seconding.
Thank you, and we do have a presentation.
Yep. I believe that we have a group present, two presentations, one from FM Global and one from the Economic Development Committee. So if you can come up. And if you can also introduce yourselves before you start speaking, that would be great.
Of course. Thank you, Madam Moderator, and thank you, Town of Norwood. My name is Pam Griffin. I am the staff senior vice president for FM Global, and I am accompanied by my partner, Steve Brunson, who is from Dushar, McMillan, and Associates, helping us guide us through this process. We thank you for your time tonight, and we promise to keep it quick. So we're going to spend just a few minutes walking you through who FM Global is, our relationship to the town, what we're building here, and what the benefits are to FM Global. FM Global's been around for 185 years. Eighty of those years, we've been here in Norwood. We're very committed to the Town of Norwood. We have over 5,500 employees worldwide, and I think nearly 600, maybe 700 here in Norwood alone. I can't see what you're clicking. Oh, yeah, no, you're good.
So very quickly, just an overview, before this proposed project of FM Global's presence here, there are four buildings that FM Global and its affiliates own in Norwood. That's a training building, not listed, 1175, 1151, and the four points by Sheraton Hotel. So in terms of current employment impact between all of those, we're right around 726 employees, give or take, that report to the site. An additional 91 employees are affiliated with the site, some contractors that are there on a regular basis, and then 77 remote workers that may or may not be on the site on any given day. The proposed project, and you'll hear a lot more about that from Pam momentarily, would add at least 20, but we are proposing significantly overbuilding and having room for significant growth in advance of that. As many as 50, still a little fuzzy on the details as, as we build that out, but planning to overbuild for the ability to continue to grow in Norwood for years to come.
Okay, so I get the fun slides. The big picture in the middle is what we're proposing our new building on Route One to look like. We're tearing down that existing building, which I refer to as the ugly building. I've never liked it. Much prettier inside than the outside. There's a lot of greenery in the front. We're really planning on building up the front of the building in front of Route One for aesthetics. But what's really exciting is that we're planning on making Norwood FM Global's global research and development hub. We have research campuses in Gloucester, Rhode Island. That's a more exciting one, where we blow stuff up and set things on fire. Lot more interesting. We have a new place in Singapore, and we are currently and actively building another research campus in Luxembourg, where we're going to do cybersecurity and stuff like that. But the, the Norwood property is going to be our hub, which means all of our engineers, all of our executives are going to come to Norwood for training, demonstrations. We're going to bring clients in. We're going to do some demonstrations there. We have a nice two-floor glass place that we're going to be able to do demonstrations for visitors. So out of all this, all these places around the world, we're looking at Norwood as our hub, so I think that's pretty exciting. This is a high-level demonstration of what the property looks like. Where you see 1165, there's a little center, like, three fingers. That is the new building. We have a nice hub that crosses all these fingers. Here, you can really see the trees and the greenery that we're going to add. We have a nice quad in the back, a lot of natural, local greenery that we're going to include, including some trees and possibly tulips. And again, some of the great things about this space is we have research labs. We're actually going to be doing experiments there. We have offices, and we're actually building our second executive suites, which means our executive team is going to be holding board meetings here in Norwood and not at our headquarters in Johnston, Rhode Island. It's much closer to Boston, it's easier to get to, so we're going to be bringing a lot of top-heavy people in and filling up our hotel as well. This is just some fun pictures of ideas of what the space inside might look like. Additionally, there's some, some really important details to this project. We're expecting the project to be LEED Gold certified. LEED is the sustainability and environmental aspect of the company, of the building. We were hoping for LEED Platinum, but we're shooting for minimum of LEED Gold. We're also aiming for a WELL certification, which is more about personal well-being of the employees and being very committed to our employees in that way.
And now for the not-as-fun slides. What is this going to cost? What's the proposed commitment to the site from FM Global? Current budget has this just under $600 million to execute this on the site in Norwood, including a little over 500 in, in facility-related costs, about $53 million in personal property, and then additional costs related to that. And that is, that is onsite only. So when we looked at this project and the reason why we originally approached Norwood back in the, the spring, late spring, early summer, is the cost unique to this project to execute it as the company wants to execute in Norwood? So in order to build on this campus, they've got employees there already, they've got the ugly building. That needs to be torn down. That means those employees need to go somewhere else for that period of time. The cost just to do that, in terms of improvements to One Tech Way where those employees would temporarily sit, is $48 million. Structure is needed on the, on the parking structure is needed in order to execute on the site, and then utility work. So just unique to this site, when compared to other options that were considered, over $100 million in investment needed to execute, showing the commitment of FM Global to execute this in the Town of Norwood. So what are the benefits of this? Our current projections show over 40 mil, $41 million in new tax revenue to the town over the proposed 20-year term of the TIF. In addition to that, there'd be building permit fees, additional hotel and meal fees in taxes, water and sewer and electric fees. There will be construction workers, additional jobs from 2023 to 2026, actually, it'll be 2024 to 2026, spending time and money in the community, consistent increase visitors, as Pam alluded to, this being a global hub, this being where they're going to have executive meetings, filling up that hotel, and then additional taxes generated by that investment in One Tech Way. So again, summing that up, you know, the reason for the ask today for the support from the TIF is to help offset a portion of those unique, extraordinary costs to executing this project, and FM Global is prepared with support tonight to, to commit to the full scope of the project as proposed here tonight.
Mr. Costello?
Madam Moderator. My name's Steve Costello. I'm chairman of the Norwood Economic Development Committee. Been a resident of Norwood my entire life. I want to thank the members of the committee, Bob Thornton, Alan, Eric Bodenhoff, and Bill Plasko, Joe Collins, for the work that we've put in on this. I'm a president of Bank of Canton. I've been in banking for 43-plus years. I've been chairman of the Nippon's Valley Chamber of Commerce. I've been on the social Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Committee and have financed millions of dollars' worth of development throughout my career. The goal today is to talk to you a little bit about what the TIFs are, the TIF process particular to this, our rationale, and for the recommendation. I also want to thank the Select Board and the Finance Committee for their support that they've, they've given us. So without further ado, I've put the timer on. I've been told not to go. I am Irish. I do have a tendency to run on, so we will try and make this as, as quick as possible. So, five-member committee appointed by the Board of Selectmen. Alls we're interested in is growing the commercial industrial tax base within the town and to attract and retain businesses that will come, particularly businesses like this, clean businesses that will make a difference. The TIF, there's no decrease in the existing taxes. There is a delay in increasing the tax rate. We took a lot of time looking into what exactly are we going to do and how does this measure up to the other TIFs that we've given? Here's the location, and again, some people may not be aware. FM Global, this is the Sheraton, this doesn't show up real well, this is the location of the new building, this is DMA, all right? So they all own all this property. One of the articles is to subdivide because there's a TIF on this building. That's the explanation real quick. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on these items. Certainly be glad to answer any questions. We didn't purposely make this photograph doc or anything else. This is the existing building. This is the new building. So as you learn about FM Global, Bob Thornton actually cut out an article, it was in the nineteen, March 29th, 1964, Boston Globe, talks about some of the major players in employment in the Town of Norwood. All right, and as we go through the numbers, and I won't bore you with the details, Factory Mutual's been here since 1950, Burden Sun, sold, greatly reduced, Plimpton Press, we know what that is right now, Mason Nealon, empty, Northrop, Raytheon, not there. Factory Mutual's been with us the entire time. All right? That helps our tax base. Talked about the change in the, their commitment. This $593 million makes the original Moderna project seem like nothing. All right, that was $110 million. This is $593 million. If they don't spend it, the TIF can be canceled. All right? So balls in, they're caught on that. Here's where the rubber meets the road. Tough to see, but in, in essence, I want to focus on, this will increase taxes by 35 million. Whoops, I'm sorry. Now, the delay, which is 330,000, 330,000, for the first couple of years, it goes 25, down to 20, down to 10, as we go forward. This is all on percentages. If the tax assessment is different, then the value of taxes we get drops down, and their delay in, in taxes also goes down. We think that's a significant increase in taxes. When we look at this rate down here, the 16.25, Bob Thornton asked us to take a look at the TIFs, excluding the recent Moderna TIFs, which were, were very high, this ties in with the average TIF that we've given over the life. So we're not giving anything special. People who don't know me, I'm here to increase the commercial industrial tax base for the town. I don't want to get into design. We don't, we just want to increase the tax base. We think this does it. Our recommendation is less than they requested. You know, they wanted more, they wanted 35%. They wanted for not quite as long, but significantly more upfront. There is a time value of money. They requested their personal property taxes. We declined those. All right? And came up with that estimate you just saw, 25% for five years, 20% for the next five years, 10% for the remaining 10. FM Global, present for 73 years, we're going to convince them to move their headquarters here to Norwood. This will be a state-of-the-art research and development facility on Route One. You couldn't ask for a better billboard, and I'm in commercial development, you don't see commercial development like this taking place in the state of Massachusetts right now. You've all read about it, commercial real estate is down. This is a major win for our town. You couldn't ask for a better location. Moderna, I'm not sure everyone has gone up and seen the facility, that's out of sight, out of mind. This is on Route One. You're going to see it every day as you drive by. We're thrilled with that significant energy, investment in green energy, geothermal, et cetera, green space. Can't cost justify it. That's a commitment they're making, impossible collaboration of, of the schools. Building permit fee. Sorry, I didn't keep up. $5 million. I've actually talked with, this is the number that we talked with Board of Selectmen on the warrant. We actually think this is going to be higher for the building permit fee. Personal property taxes, which we didn't change, could be as high as $11 million over the length of it. All right? That's a big injection of cash right up front. Increased hotel meals tax. To me, the most important thing, Route One is our river, the messaging that we have, and it's because of the Select Board, all right, the Finance Committee, the people preceded them, the people who sat in these seats before in town meeting, who made a commitment to business development, is the reason we've been successful managing our tax rate. And that puts money in each one of our pockets. We think this messaging, not only does it send it to people who drive by, but the Mass Office of Business Development, we have a great reputation with them, we get things done, we make a decision, we decline things, we've given, we think this is important messaging because Town of Norwood appreciates the right type of commercial development. You've seen this slide before? The only town that's close to us is Canton. All right? Their tax rate is $10.50. You go to Dedham, it's 1284. You go to Sharon, it's 1859. You go to Foxborough, Walpole, Three, multiply it by the thousands that you own on the property, that can range anywhere from, in Canton, not much, $163. If you go to Sharon, it's 5,376, if your house is worth $600,000. It's investments like these that make a difference. Unique, different, unique circumstances as we go forward. Projects are progressing, will they stop? Likely not, but again, we think the messaging's important. Subdivision of the parcel, there's the technicality. If they had put this project out to bid, we would have had to have a more attractive TIF. I have no doubt in my mind, based upon my experience, we appreciate that commitment. And there are, there are intangible things that happen when we make these decisions, right? We were aggressive in our TIF to Moderna. That aggression, that willingness to support business, was a factor, I believe, in Alexandria buying the, the property from us, and it worked out well. I can't stress enough, messaging matters for businesspeople. Whoops, went back. So this TIF process has had a sense of urgency. The final draft of the proposed TIF agreement is, is being finalized. There will not be a change with respect to the discounts we talked about on the increased valuation. Failure of the parties to abide by the employment number, by the investment number, voids the TIF. They're making a tremendous commitment to our town. So the Economic Development Committee, which has some strong opinions on it, unanimously approved, recommended proposed TIF after extensive discussions with the applicant. I personally called state officials, who are very receptive to the project, our town's Board of Selectmen Finance Committee, and again, we appreciate their support, also unanimously approved the TIF recommendation, and our committee respectfully asks that you support this recommendation tonight. It helps us get our work done on the Economic Development Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costello. And you did not run over, congratulations.
I had a minute, five seconds left, according to my timer, so I'm going to turn that off so it doesn't make a noise, so.
Okay. I do not have any registered speakers on this, so let me open it up, sir, right back there.
Hi, Michael Chen, District Five. A few technical questions. I am supportive of this, but just want some clarifications. First, it says that the final draft of the TIF agreement is in process, but you're asking town meeting to essentially approve the TIF when it's actually not done as an agreement. So what is the process by which- So what is the process by which Town Meeting will evaluate the final TIF agreement as it relates to the actual warrant? I know it's in final draft, but these things can always change at the last minute. Is there a legal reason why this needs to go through Town Meeting now versus when the final TIF agreement is ready? And I have a few follow-up technical questions, but that might help.
All right, Mr. Collins, going to take that? And please introduce yourself as well for anyone who does not know who you are.
Hi, I'm Joe Collins. I'm the Economic Development Director. The both TIF agreements related to Articles 5 and 6 have actually been completed and are ready to be signed.
If I can just ask two follow-up questions then. The first is, there was a statement that this was dependent on the actual completion of the property, and I'm just wondering how that's sort of encoded in the actual TIF agreement. The second is, what happens if either the property owner or the company changes in the course of the TIF, whether that resets the clock and whether the TIF agreement clock is dependent on the ownership and the company residing at the property staying the same?
Go ahead, Mr. Collins.
So if the project does not happen to get completed, theoretically, the real estate value will not increase. Therefore, they won't receive an incentive for completing the project, which wouldn't be completed. If the prod, if the company changes or someone else buys it, we could keep the TIF agreement in place if we wanted to, or we could ask the state to decertify the TIF and it would basically be dissolved.
Is that decertification a matter of sort of road procedure? Or is there an actual interpretation that needs to have? And I'm imagining another company, obviously, this is a long sort of shot scenario, but another company in inheriting the terms of the TIF, which are advantageous, without necessarily having to come back through Town Meeting?
It's pretty straightforward. It would be a decision of the economic, well, the Board of Selectmen would ask the Economic Development Committee to consider decertifying it. If they would vote yes, and the Selectmen would later agree to asking the state to decertify it, they would go on and typically the state will usually agree with the local authority and things like this.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. Have you run up here?
Paul Ezy, District 3. First of all, I think this is a huge accomplishment that what was done. I got, I came to Town Meeting a few minutes early, and I got to talk to some of the executives at FM Global. These are the kind of people we want in Norwood, no question. And I think, I just have a couple of questions. Can someone explain, I've lived in Norwood my entire life, and honestly, until this article came up, I never knew what FM Global ever did. Could someone explain to the people that are watching this tonight, what do they do? And then I have a couple of follow-up questions.
We'll have Ms. Griffin do that.
Thank you for the softball. Actually, FM Global loves to talk about what FM Global does because we do it well. FM stands for Factory Mutual. We are an insurance company by name. So it's Factory Mutual Insurance Company. We are the amalgamation of three smaller mutual insurance companies that merged back in 1999. We believe that the majority of losses are preventable. So as an insurance company, for anybody who has anything to do with insurance, we don't have one actuary on staff, which is absolutely unheard of. What we have are 3,800 engineers. And what we do is we help people and our clients prevent losses in their buildings, which is what the research is all about. In our Gloucester campus, we set things on fire to show our clients how the sprinklers may or may not work in their system. We test and approve products to make sure that they're going to function in a disaster the way they're designed to function. So we put our FM-approved stamp on there, which actually means something in the industry. We are working on the cybersecurity lab in Luxembourg so that we can help our clients prevent cybersecurity. We want to work with our clients to make sure that they prevent the loss, but if there's a loss, we insure them. So it's a real partnership. We are a mutual insurance company, which means our policyholders are our owners. So they fully buy into what we're doing. I can publicly state, because it's in our annual report, Disney World is one of our clients. And so we have big clients with big risks, and our goal is to help them prevent those losses.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin.
Just a follow-up. I understand that FM Global owns the Four Points Sheridan. They own that, the property where you're going to do this big project, and they also own Dedham Medical. Are there any other tax breaks in any of those other buildings?
So there is a current TIF on the Dedham Medical Building. Right now, that whole property, so there's the hotel, there's the current building, the ugly building now to be the beautiful building. And behind that, we have a learning center where we bring in folks for training, and then there's what's called a SIM zone. We simulate losses in there. We don't actually blow things up. We simulate what it might look like behind that, sort of connected to that learning center. And then there's the Dedham Medical Center, which is the newest building that does have a TIF. Right now, all four properties are on the same parcel of land. The Dedham Medical Building is part of our commercial real estate arm. We invest in commercial real estate. We lease it as an investment. The other properties, well, the hotel is obviously commercial real estate as well. But so we're trying to, we plan on dividing the properties into corporate-owned and occupied buildings, which will be the new building and the learning center behind it. So we plan on subdividing those three parcels. Also, as I understand, we can't have two TIFs on the same property. So the Dedham Medical Building, which is a commercial real estate building, will have its own property and its own address. The new building with the parking garage and with the learning center behind will be its own parcel, and then the hotel will be its own parcel.
Thank you, Mr. Ezy. Good.
John Hall, District 6. You've heard of some excellent presentations on the direct economics of all this. Paul Ezy finally introduced the question of who the heck is Factory Mutual? And we heard from Factory Mutual, what would you expect them to say except that they're great? So I thought it might be interesting to hear from somebody, me, who has more than 30 years of experience working with Factory Mutual and can attest to what you've heard, which is, if anything, understated. For 30 years, I was working out of Quincy, Massachusetts, at the National Fire Protection Association in their research operation. I got involved with international groups that are collections of researchers that set standards, international standards and the like. And everywhere I went, the majority of Americans present were from Factory Mutual. They had transformative work in several areas, including the sprinklers that were mentioned, but some others as well. And their approach was, we're not like a conventional insurance company, the parent. We're here to reduce losses rather than pay for them. And it sounds simple, but it turns out to be extremely difficult to do, and I don't know any other operation in the world that has set that mesh and let alone accomplished it so well. I have a vision for Norwood, that we become a magnet for certain very high-quality, research-oriented operations. I see Moderna at one end of Norwood. I see Factory Mutual at another end. If we ever get the darn hospital up, they can be in the middle. But if you need a reason, if you will, other than the excellent economics which have been presented, this is exactly the kind of operation we want to be the face of Norwood, to be what people who think of Norwood think of. There may be bigger places. There may be places with longer histories, but there's nothing like Factory Mutual, and we should really welcome this.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Kevin Connolly, District 7. Would FM Global be doing this expansion if there wasn't a tax break option?
It's a simple question.
Ms. Griffin?
The answer is yes. We would be moving forward. We are moving forward. Anybody who goes down Route 1 can see the sides of the building coming down. We did look at other options outside of Norwood. We've been committed to Norwood for a very long time. As my accomplice over here mentioned, we've invested heavy money into One Tech Way to move our people there temporarily. The question really is, how much would we do? We have big plans for this site, and we are way, way, way over budget. Our original budget was just over half of this amount that we're anticipating. So it really becomes a matter of, do we delay some of the big-ticket items? Do we push things off a little bit? But yes, we are committed to Norwood enough that we're proceeding with this project.
Okay.
Follow-up, Mr. Connolly.
Yes, Madam Moderator. Thank you. Through you to Chief Brooks, does he see any increases in security or any of that nature with the expansion?
It's a question, do we expect to see?
Actually, Ms. Griffin, he's directing it to the police chief. I know you're enthusiastic to answer it, but...
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Our answers might be about the same. I wouldn't, I wouldn't anticipate anything like that, like that at all. That's a feeling. We have the hotel down there, which has a function facility, of course. FM Global has been there for quite some time. I don't remember us having a radio call down there, to be honest with you. I wouldn't anticipate anything like that.
Thank you, Chief.
Katie Neil Rizzo, District 2. It would probably be helpful if you could also ensure or advise towns who may be subject to massive 50-year hospital closing floods. That would be, I think we could help, use some help with the insurance on that. I'm generally in favor of this TIF. I'm in favor of the project. It is an ugly building. I agree with you on that. My children and I drive by it often, and I think the plans look beautiful. The hotel's also beautiful. I see that it runs right along the Nipponset River. It doesn't show it on the map so much because it's not quite clear, but I had two questions. One was, as this construction goes on, I noticed that on the Ocean State Job Lot side of the river, there's a lot of trash that goes into that Nipponset River. I see that your side of the river is a lot cleaner, and my hopes, my hope is that during the construction, that the cleanliness of the river and the debris will be kept out of that, or some attention would be made to keeping the debris, construction debris out of the river. My other question is that this land is in the, in an area of town that's already been designated as an environmental justice community. So there's a certain population in this area that is known to be generally at a disadvantage and experiences higher levels of environmental justice, environmental pollution. So I am quest, I have a question about your, I saw that there was a 900-car parking garage planned, and that Route 1 has already been designated as part of a heat island in Norwood that generally is hotter than other areas because there aren't a lot of trees. I saw trees on your frontage, on the, the front area of your plans. For the garage, is it going to be, we're used to seeing on Route 1 as part of the auto mile, open-air, asphalt-topped, not super-attractive parking garages that further emit more heat into this heat island? Is the 900-car parking garage going to be closed? Will it be open? Is it going to contribute to that heat island or that heat effect? Or is that going to be indoor, closed parking?
All right, so I think there were two questions there. Ms. Griffin, can you take it?
I can share with you what I know. The first thing I can, I'll comment on is the Nipponset River. FM Global's committed to its community, and I can assure you that we'll do everything we can to keep any of our own trash or any site work out of that river. In our Gloucester campus, we actually recycle all of our own water, and not one speck of smoke escapes without it being through filter systems. So we're very committed, and I think you'll be very pleased with the work that we do there. The garage, it is going to be a multi-level garage, and so when you say open air, it's not like one flat parking level. It's going to be multi-tiered. I believe it'll have open air in there. I don't really know, to be honest with you, about the heat, but I do recall hearing about a study or some analysis with respect to the parking garage. And I'm happy to take your information and respond to you, or I'll give you my card and you can share with what I know when I know it. It's all public information, and I presume somebody on the building committee probably knows about that. But the parking garage will also be in the back. You will not see it well from the front of the building, from Route 1. We do plan on putting trees in, regional trees, like native trees throughout the property, and you can only put so much in the cement, but we do plan on growing out the green space as well. Does that answer your question?
It does. I will give you my contact information about that, because I know that the asphalt plant is already in the rear area of that property or further back, and that contributes to the pollution in that environmental justice community. So that was my concern, was that that population wouldn't be further endangered by any pollution, which you answered with your, your pollution filters, but also that the parking garage would not add any additional heat to that heat island that we see in Norwood along Route 1.
Again, I can't promise you that. I only know what I know. So, but again, I'll share my information so you can make sure that you have someone to contact as well.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I'll remind everyone, we're not voting on the construction. We're voting on, on the TIF.
That's Kevin Shaughnessy, District 6. I'm also Superintendent of the Light Department, so I think I'm going to speak as the Superintendent of the Light Department. We've dealt with Factory Mutual, Hobbs, Brooks Management, whoever is in control on that property. And I will say, for the last almost 40 years, they've been a pleasure to deal with. I think one of the reasons maybe that they chose to stay in Norwood is their rates, but that's also a catch-22, because one of the reasons we enjoy low rates in Norwood is because of customers like this. They are an excellent customer. Their load factor is high. We, you know, we benefit from that. They're easy to deal with. They're transparent. To answer, possibly help answer the question about the garage, I know they have many, many electric vehicle charging stations planned for that, which is good. The move to, to the analog property is, seems to be going very well. Again, very easy to deal with, so I'm very much in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaughnessy. All right, Ms. Taylor is moving the question. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, way in the back. Good luck. All right, again, non-debatable, two-thirds vote, the question, two-thirds vote, question has been moved. All those in favor moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. That's unanimous. All right, that takes us to the main motion, which is, not up there. There it is, like magic. I am going to spare reading the whole thing to basically say that the town will vote to approve this TIF agreement as referenced here. All those in favor, and this is a majority vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. That is unanimous. All right, Article 6, Mr. Lane.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Move that the town will vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 59 and Chapter 23A, Sections 3A through 3F, and the applicable regulations there under 2. A, amend a tax increment financing agreement between the town, FM Global, and Nipponset River LLC, approved by Norwood Town Meeting on May 9, 2011, and executed by the town and FM Global and Nipponset River LLC on May 9, 2011, for a property shown on Assessor's Map 15, Sheet 13, Lot 1. Map 15, Sheet 13, Lot 1B, which TIF agreement provides for real estate tax exemptions over a 20-year period at the exemption rate schedule set forth therein. And B) authorize this Board of Selectmen to execute an amended TIF agreement and any documents related thereto, and to approve submission to the Massachusetts Economic Assistance Coordinating Council of the TIF agreement and any documents related thereto, all relating to the project as described in the TIF agreement, and any necessary documents relating thereto and related submissions, and to take such other actions as necessary or appropriate to implement those documents and carry out the purposes of this article.
And Mr. Donnelly is seconding on the motion.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Costello alluded to this in his presentation, but you cannot have multiple TIF agreements on one parcel of land, so, but if anyone else would like to further expand on this, please do.
I believe that this is a bit of a technical and a housekeeping where the, first, this TIF is being amended for the portion of the property that's affected by it, and the new TIF is on the separate property or the new property, if you will, which is a separate Any discussion? Mr. Hopcroft.
Francis Hopcroft, District 1. Has that subdivision been approved and done already, or is that going to be done? And if it's not done yet, is this approval subject to that?
Mr. Collins?
Yes, the Planning Board approved the A&R in, I believe, August. Yes, August.
Follow-up, Mr. Hopcroft?
So it has been done already or just approved?
Correct. It's been approved.
Approved and executed are two different things.
Right.
And I'm asking about the execution, not the approval.
Effectively, it will take, it will be executed the next few months, and will take effect starting FY '24.
And when will this TIF take effect?
The TIF agreement, they won't start receiving incentives on it until the entire project is complete, so it probably won't be a few years from now, 2026.
The amendment was going to take that long as well as the original? This is an amendment, no?
This is an amendment, so this is the existing.
So when does this become effective?
The new, the amended TIF will take effect as soon as the Economic Assistance Coordinating Council of the state approves the amended TIF agreement.
I think we're still dancing around the questions of when subdivision occurs and when the TIF becomes effective.
The subdivision has been submitted. For tax purposes, it will take effect on July 1 of next year, but as far as the state is concerned, everything will, everything will work effectively. The 2011 TIF agreement, basically, once it's amended, it will, once it's amended, it will, it will basically take effect as soon as the state approves the TIF agreement, the amended TIF agreement, and the subdivision will be approved by the Engineering Department. I believe it's already been approved by the Planning Department.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hopcroft. Anything further? Seeing none, let's take it to a vote. This is Article 6, and this is to amend the current TIF agreement per the motion right up there. Majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Motion carries. Article 7 by the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Lane.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article 7, move that the town vote to update the current stretch energy code, Article, Roman numeral that?
Forty-eight. Forty-eight.
Okay, there we go, forty-eight. Of the general bylaws, as printed in the warrant, lest the phrase, or take any other action in the matter to include the municipal opt-in specialized stretch energy code, the specialized energy code, for the purpose of regulating the design and construction of buildings for the effective use of energy and reduction of greenhouse gas emissions pursuant to the entirety of 225 CMR 22 and 23, including appendices RC and CC, including future additions, amendments, or modifications thereto, provided that said adoption of the specialized energy code and this amendment of the bylaws shall be effective as of July 1, 2024.
All right, and Mr. Donnelly is seconding on the motion.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. About five years ago, Norwood adopted the stretch energy code, which is a more energy-efficient requirement for renovation and new construction in Massachusetts. The state made a change to the law last year to allow communities to go a step further in enhancing energy efficiency in new construction. This would adopt the state's furthest energy efficiency code for buildings. It does apply only to new residential construction and commercial construction, not current renovations of existing properties. It would take effect if passed in July of this year.
All right, on the motion? Mr. Hearn.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. David Hearn, District 4. I have a few questions. I don't know really who's in a position or who has the background to answer them, but, and let me preface my questions with the comment that I agree that what, anything we can do to help us with respect to climate change, anything reasonable we can do is a good thing. What I wonder about here is, how do we accomplish all this? The first question is, is, do we have the capability to supply the electricity that would be required for electrification of everything or everything new? And ultimately, the goal would be, as opposed, to switch everybody to all-electric. Seems to me that that electricity has to come from somewhere, has to be generated by something, and oftentimes, it's generated by fossil-fuel burning plants. So are we just increasing that need? Does the Light Department, is Mr. Shaughnessy, I think he's here, able to tell us about the capabilities of the Norwood Light Department to provide the electricity that would be required by these new codes?
I think Mr. Mizuka, or is Mr. Shaughnessy going to?
I'll defer to Mr. Shaughnessy, but just one point I want to make. It's important to note that it's the code July 1, it would be the code July 1, for new construction going forward. So there's not going to be a requirement that anyone change anything in their current home or business, so that change is actually going to happen very slowly over time. And I'll defer to Mr. Shaughnessy for the remainder of the question.
Mr. Hearn, maybe if you've got more questions, come up here.
Madam Moderator, Kevin Shaughnessy, District 6, also Superintendent of the Light Department. So the question, as I see it, is, can we handle additional electric load that would be generated from this? And the answer is yes. If we couldn't in the future, obviously, we would have to expand. But as far as greenhouse gas goes and how the power's going to be generated over the next, say, 25 years, I think many people are aware that there is what's called Roadmap 2050. So by 2030, 50% of our, the power that we buy will be non-greenhouse gas emitting. By 2040, that number would be 75, and by 2050, it would be 100%. We're already, with the contracts we have now, we're already set for 2030. We're very close to being set for 2040. Of course, these projects that we heard tonight with Factory Mutual Moderna would mean we'd have to have some additional purchase power agreements with, whether it's solar or hydro or, you know, wind. But right now, we're in very good shape, and I think the answer is yes, we can handle this. And to Mr. Hearn's question about greenhouse gas emitting power, that should take care of itself because of the current law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaughnessy. Follow-up, Mr. Hearn?
A couple, please, Madam Moderator. I appreciate Mr. Shaughnessy's reassurance, and I don't have any reason to question it. If I may, we've been told that it will not affect existing buildings. Is there some provision, though, that if there are additions to existing buildings, including residences, that they would be covered by the new code? So that a homeowner who adds on a certain percentage or a certain amount of square footage to their home would have to comply with the new code? Is that correct, and maybe?
I think we're going to have our building inspector, Mr. Pelletier, come up. Why don't you grab the mic right up there? Please also introduce yourself for folks who may not know you.
Gary Pelletier, Building Commissioner. To answer the question, the current stretch energy code, which is in effect, addresses existing buildings, so, single-family homes that expand beyond 1,000 square feet or greater than a 50% renovation would be subject to the provisions of the existing energy code, the existing stretch energy code. The opt-in would not, doesn't affect it. It's only new construction.
So what, if I may, Madam Moderator, what are the differences, then, between the existing law and this proposed new law that we're being asked to adopt?
Well, I believe it's been, it's been addressed extensively in the Yellow Sheet and in the questions and answers, but the short answer is it's the elimination of fossil fuels. It's basically going to an all-electric building, virtually eliminating mixed fuel, or getting to a net zero, which would be provisions for eliminating any kind of net fossil-fuel usage. Does that answer your question?
Well, I think that's, I understand, Madam Moderator, that to be the goal, but why do we, what is the point of adopting something unless it's going to impose new obligations or new requirements? This is going to have some new requirements, Madam Moderator? Maybe Mr. Pelletier has the answer to that.
Either, Mr. Pelletier. Well, thank you for moderating, Mr. Hearn. Do you mind if I jump in?
Madam Moderator, I did direct the question to you to relay to the appropriate person, but I made a suggestion. I do understand that questions go through you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Hearn.
What is the specific question? What are the specific new requirements?
Madam Moderator, if I may ask, what are the real changes between what we have in effect now and what we're being asked to do? In other words, what is the change in burden? What is the change in benefit? What do we have to do different if this passes?
For new construction over, for a residential, single-family home over 4,000 square feet, you would not have a fossil-fuel option. It would have to be all-electric or net zero. Under 4,000, it would be allowed to follow the passive house or hers or net zero. So you would still be able to use some fossil fuel for heating and cooling, but you'd still have to meet the requirements under the existing stretch energy code. So that's really the only change for single-family homes. In commercial, it's basically FIAS, net zero, FiCor, or complete all-electric.
And several of those terms I don't understand, but I appreciate you answering the questions.
They're complicated. We could be here for a while if I have to explain.
And I don't intend to do that. I'm frankly asking questions because other people have asked me questions, Madam Moderator, about this, and the question is, we're trying to create new housing. Unfortunately, these types of improvements come with a cost that make housing more expensive to build, and we've got to balance that. I don't necessarily oppose or support this, but I had questions, and Mr. Shaughnessy's answers have helped in terms of my understanding, as well as Mr. Pelletier. So I thank you for the opportunity, Madam Moderator, and I thank the people who asked, answered the questions for their answers.
Thank you, Mr. Hearn. Anything further? Way in the back.
No, ma'am. Just a review of the question.
Oh, all right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Rao. All right. Again, non-debatable. Question has been moved. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
I think we probably had two-thirds from that, to be honest with you, so, in my estimation. All right, let's do this. Show of hands on moving the question. It is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Question is moved. Takes us to, back to the motion, Article 7, is that the town update this current stretch energy code, Article 48 of the general bylaw, as printed in the warrant, to include the municipal opt-in specialized stress energy code for the purpose of regulating the design and construction of buildings for the effective use in energy and reduction of greenhouse gas emissions pursuant to entity 225 CMR 23 and 22 and 23. Up there, going into effect on July 1, 2024. This is a majority vote. All those in favor of motion, of motion on Article 7, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Passes. Article 8. Okay, we are moving to the capital plan, and we're going to start, because this is the beginning of the financial articles. We're going to start with the presentation by the FinCom Chairman, Boden Hopper.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Oh, all right, thank you. Is it up? I can, I'm not sure where I'm supposed to point this. Where's the receiver?
Do you want me to do a pass?
What am I supposed to point this at? Where?
I think here.
All right. I don't know if I can, I don't think I can do that from here.
Why don't we just say "next" when you want the next slide?
We'll go with that. Thank you, everyone. I wanted to start with just a brief note about why the Finance Commission does a presentation at the beginning of every town meeting. FinCom is different from the other major boards. We don't have much direct authority. We don't sign contracts or approve payroll warrants. Our role is to serve you as town meeting. Every town meeting member is free to ask questions and dig into the details of town financials, but we are elected to have that specific responsibility and make sure that gets done. We do the due diligence for town meeting members, and we make recommendations to you. So we offer this presentation to share information about what we think is most important for town meeting members to know before they make their votes on financial matters. Next slide, please. Thus far, we have reviewed and presented the FY '24 budget at our town meeting back in May. We met with our financial advisors in September. We have been reviewing the town's finances on an ongoing basis, and at this town meeting, we are making recommendations for funding of capital outlay and other smaller requests. Next slide, please. In general, the FY '24 financial outlook is somewhat uncertain. There are some positives. We have a very good amount of cash available. There are some challenges. When we look out in the future, we see projections of some potential upcoming deficits, and then there's unknowns, such as the general economy. Next slide, please. In terms of positive factors, free cash has been certified at $12.9 million. We have approximately $10 million in a fund from the Forbes proceeds. Local receipts projections look strong for FY '24, and in our most recent bond requests, our bond rating was recertified at AA+. Next slide, please. Want to talk a little bit more about free cash. This is a big thing every year for a town meeting. The sources of free cash can be divided into two basic categories. The first is if expenditures are less than the money appropriated, that leftover money becomes free cash the following year. For example, if we have a good winter, and we may underspend on snow and ice, and so then that money that was left in that budget item that wasn't spent becomes free cash the following year. The second category is if revenues are higher than projected The second category is if revenues are higher than projected in the budget, that extra revenue becomes free cash. So for example, this year, we had a few big-ticket items that helped us have more free cash. Our building permits, we had some large permits, like big projects from Moderna. In terms of investment income, we had significantly higher revenues there than we did in previous years. This is partly because interest rates have climbed, and also because we borrowed the $100 million for the middle school upfront in order to take advantage of lower interest rates before they started to climb. But that money, much of that money is still sitting in an account that is interest-bearing, or that is earning revenue. Ambulance receipts were higher than predicted, and the other thing I want to talk about is our room and meals taxes. These had taken a hit during the pandemic, but they have now recovered and even surpassed the pre-pandemic levels. So those are all good things. Next slide, please. Free cash is unpredictable year to year. Since the pandemic, we have been very conservative with our estimates for revenue for local receipts, and so fortunately, we have had some pretty good free cash numbers lately. Next slide. As we look ahead to FY24, we're currently about four months into FY24, we are optimistic about our local receipts for this year as well. We have already received one very large building permit for Norwood Hospital. We expect some other large permits coming in this year, so we're hoping that this line item will be at least $7 million over the projected value. Next slide. We do have some financial challenges. When we, the Budget Balancing Committee has been meeting and looking at initial forecasts for FY25 through FY29, trying to do a five-year forecast of what we see coming, and we are projecting some significant deficits. Now, there's a lot of work left to be done on this. This is not to say that we will definitely have a deficit in May, but we're, the initial projections are showing a $2.5 million deficit for FY26, and approximately $5 million deficit for, I'm sorry, 2.5 for FY25, and approximately $5 million deficit for FY26. It's also, should be noted that some of the COVID-related grants that we had received are ending. Next slide. At the federal and state level, there are some unknowns. There's general inflation uncertainty and possible recession concerns. At the state level, there's, the state is also facing some financial pressures, so it's unclear if the large increases in state aid will continue, and there's an unknown impact from the millionaires tax. Next slide. At the local level, we have many union contracts that are up for renewal in FY25, and these will all have impacts on our expenses, police, fire, teachers, et cetera. There are also some personnel changes. We are currently in the process of hiring a new Director of Finance for the town, and the schools will soon be hiring a new business manager. So there's a lot of change going on. Next slide. In terms of our planning, you will remember that when we, in 2019, voted for an operational override, the committee that had put that together, the Budget Balancing Committee, had made a five-year pledge to the voters, that we would control spending and that we would not come back to ask for additional money within that override period. That five years is coming to an end with the end of FY24. So the Budget Balancing Committee has begun to meet again, starting on those five-year forecasts that I mentioned, and working to determine a budget allocation system going forward. So that work is ongoing. Next slide, please. So FinCom has been talking a lot about where are we at financially and what should we do. So the great news is that our free cash number is a windfall. It's all good news. But we want to make sure we spend it wisely. We'd like to help to stabilize spending, set some aside for a rainy day, invest in our infrastructure, but also be aware of upcoming expenses. We don't want to have to reduce services later for purchases that are made now. Next slide, please. In terms of FinCom's goals, the first one I'd like to talk about is to honor the intention of town meeting, that, of the vote that was taken in May of 2022 regarding the Forbes money. The official vote was voided by the Department of Revenue for a technical reason about state rules, that, about how towns can spend the proceeds from sale of real estate. It's an unusual thing that doesn't usually happen to towns, and so the state law is a little picky about that. So they have voided our vote, but remember, there was roughly $10 million available. That town meeting at that time voted to put $2 million into the override stabilization account, $2 million into the general purpose stabilization account, and the remaining six-plus million dollars would be saved for potential open space purchase in the future. We weren't able to actually make those transfers, but FinCom remains committed to actually getting that done. So the next slide shows the general purpose stabilization and override stabilization. General purpose is in blue, and the override stabilization is in red. The general purpose stabilization account has been slowing, slowly growing, and the override stabilization account started after the override was passed. We added to it for the first three years, and then last year, we withdrew some of the funds to offset the operating budget. Next slide, please. So in terms of what do we doing with the Forbes money, we're proposing a little bit of a substitution. We are allowed to spend Forbes money on capital projects, and then we can use free cash to move to the override stabilization fund. So we are proposing this year that we would spend $2 million from Forbes money on roadwork, but then at this, in the same meeting, move $2 million to the override stabilization account. Next slide, please. The second goal that we'd like to talk about is to keep debt service costs level. Financial policies that we have as a town establish a ceiling for debt service at 5% of the non-utility revenues. Right now, that's approximately $7 million. But note that this is a ceiling, not a target. Money spent on debt service is treated as a shared cost, and it reduces money for the general operating budgets. Next slide, please. So let's just talk about what debt service means. The definition of debt service, when the town borrows money, we do that by issuing bonds. Our debt service are the annual payments required, including principal and interest. So for example, it's not just how much we borrow, but the terms and, and the rates. So if we were to borrow $1 million for five years at, say, 4%, that would be a debt service of $225,000 a year. If we borrowed that same $1 million for 30 years at, say, a rate of 4.75%, that would only be $63,000 a year. Now, this is not to say that we should do 30-year borrowing instead of five-year borrowing. It depends on the length of the item that we're going to borrow for, but the important thing is that we need to look at not only how much money are we borrowing, but what is that going to cost us in terms of debt service? And as I said, these annual costs reduce the amount of money that's available for our operating budgets. Next slide, please. Every year, the budget book includes projections of debt service. But I want to be clear that these projections assume that there's no new borrowing, partly because we can't really anticipate at that time how much new borrowing would, there would be. So what we show is if you didn't borrow again anymore, this is what our debt service would look like. Every year, some debt service drops off as older obligations are paid off. So example, if we have a five-year bond that's approved in FY22, we would pay for it in FY23 through FY27, and then when we get to FY28, it has dropped off, and we no longer have that obligation. It's like once you've paid off your car loan, and it's a great thing, and, you know, it's nice to get a new car, but then you get hit with that car loan payment again, and it's hard to absorb that into your budget. The same thing can happen at the town. So our goal is to try to keep that debt service amount level from year to year, because we've figured out how to work that into our budget. If we let it increase too much, it's going to put pressure on our budget. If we let it decrease too much, that's, would look like a windfall for a little while, but we know at some point, we will have to borrow again, and we would feel that as a hit, like when you have to suddenly start a new car payment again. So we need to consider how new borrowing adds to our debt service. So let's look at the next slide. This slide, the blue shaded area is the projection of our debt service. That red line across the top is that ceiling, the 5% that's established in our financial policies. But we don't want to approach that number. We can't afford to approach that number and continue our normal operating expenses. So our target is that blue horizontal line. Let's look at the next slide. In terms of FinCom's spending recommendations, we do recommend a combination of free cash and borrowing for capital items. We plan to spend $2 million from the Forbes or the Rhodes, as we talked about. We would like to establish a compensated absences fund as a form of reserves. We'll talk about that more when we get to Motion 18. We want to keep, use free cash for the remaining special town meeting articles, and keep some remaining funds in free cash for future use. So the next slide shows the expenses. There's some for capital out items, some money for override stabilization. The other special town meeting articles would be $406,000, $1.5 million for compensated absences, and it does leave $7.5 million in free cash that we could appropriate at a future town meeting. Next slide, please. In terms of our capital outlay plan, we would use cash sources for most items, but we would be borrowing for large projects. But we're trying to be mindful of debt service, but we're trying to balance that goal of level debt service with the urgent needs and our strong cash position. So the plan before you would represent a one-year increase in debt service above our target level, and then we would, that would happen in FY25, but we would plan to offset that with extra free cash. And then the next year, we would be returning back to a level, to, back to the current level of debt service, assuming we do no new borrowing next year, and that is the current plan, is that we would use free cash for the capital plan the following year. So let's, next slide shows what this looks like. The green shows what the debt service looks like if we were to accept both the pool and the traffic lights. This is the debt service for the general fund. I'm not including water and sewer in this graph. But you'll notice that in FY25, we jump up above that blue line. We would have to offset that with free cash if we didn't want to take our, a hit to our operating budget, and then next year, at this time, we would not propose any borrowing for capital items, so that then we could return to that level debt service. Next slide, please. FinCom did discuss caution regarding spending. We do recommend indefinite postponement on two projects. We, both of these projects are really worthy projects, and we would recommend them in the future, but we did not think it was wise to approve those tonight. So the Washington Street Bridge, because of the other construction going on in that area, that would not start until after the pool was complete, so there's no need to commit that money now. We can wait until May to decide whether, when we're ready to go forward with that. The other project that we are proposing delaying is the Savage Center parking lot. We'd like to wait until the elementary study work is complete, and we also know that there's several paving projects of school parking lots in the capital plan for next year, and we may be able to achieve some efficiencies by doing all that paving in the same year. And as I said, we plan that this would all, those projects next year would all be funded with free cash. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bodenhofer. All right, before we take the first motion, just to set the table here, the capital plan is going to be divided into a series of six motions. We're doing this for a couple of different reasons. One, to make it easier for you, as town meeting members, to debate and discuss. The other is to also separate by funding sources, so the votes are pure. When we need to have a borrowing, two-thirds, we're keeping like projects together. Where we're using free cash, we're keeping like projects there. So with that being said, and I know Mr. Donnelly will, after Ms. Bodenhofer makes the first motion, will be speaking as the head of the Capital Outlay Committee. Ms. Bodenhofer.
Moved by the Finance Commission- Is this on? Oh. Moved by the Finance Commission that the town appropriate the sum of $1,489,500 to pay costs of the various fiscal year 2024 capital improvement plan projects in the amounts and for the purposes set forth in the following table, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, $1,489,500 is transferred from free cash for such projects. Should I read the projects?
I think everybody can see them. It's, everybody, yeah.
Madam Moderator? The Chair of Capital Outlay has a short presentation on capital outlay.
No, I know that. I'm, we're just, we're just dealing with the motion right now. All right. Ms. Bodenhofer, why don't you just give the project name, rather than going through all the details, and people can see the details up there?
Sure. So this would include the airport runway, 1735, the security and wildlife fence replacement at the airport, the apparatus floor replacement design study at the public safety building, a mechanics truck, red dot firearms for the police, replacement of police tasers for 20 per year, a road repair program, and Ellis Pond dam improvements.
All right, and Ms. Sullivan is seconding the motion.
Yes.
And on the motion, Ms. Bodenhofer, do you have anything, or are you deferring to Mr. Donnelly?
I would just say that FinCom has voted in favor of all of these projects.
Mr. Donnelly.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. What I'd like to do is to present, share with, sharing a presentation with Mr. Mizuko, perhaps taking the, the town meeting through the process Capital Outlay Committee has undertaken, and then we'll get into the specific projects per the motion, if we could. In terms of the overview, John, if you can go to the Capital Outlay Committee presentation slide number one, I'm sorry, number two. So our Capital Outlay Committee is formed by a bylaw, bylaw for the town of Norwood, and these are our members, and I'd like, as Chair of the, of the committee, I'd like to thank each and every one of them for their time and attention to the outlay process, which we'll speak to in a moment, in terms of the work that was conducted by the, by the committee during the course of these past several months. The full report of the committee is available on the first slide. You'll see a QR code, and also, it's been on the website for town meeting members, and there are copies of the full report out in the entryway. So if we go to slide number three, John, presentation outline, what we'd like to do kind of quickly is just to give you a review and update on the 23 capital improvement plan, just to kind of like go back to what we approved last year, and what progress has been made towards those improvement plans. I'll end, I will share a funding summary of the plan with Mr. Mizuko, and then Mr. Mizuko has the proposed capital plan, the organized by motions, but Mr. Mizuko can certainly give an overview to those specific projects, and we can have specific questions to them as we go along through the motions. Next slide, please, John. So an update for our 23 plan. In FY23, the capital outlay had approved a total of 25 approved projects. Here's just a quick summary of some of them. I'll walk through them pretty quickly. Not all 25, but the full report, our full report actually has a summary of each and every one of them on page 47. Highlights include our design for the bridge rehabilitation at Washington Street in Haws Brook. The design has been completed. As Ms. Bodenhofer has mentioned, this is a project that's construction was on the preliminary plan for 24, and we will delay that to a further consideration down the line, as it, the actual construction does conflict with the proposed construction of the Haws Pool complex on the 24 plan. We have design work that has been done for the replacement of two water tanks, and we'll talk about how that impacts the 24 plan. Council of the Agent had various requests. We'll go take you through some vehicle and requests from our equipment. Our water improvement program, we purchased two fire ambulances. We continue to do parking lot repaving throughout the town. We have an ongoing project for several years now for the building, public safety building HVAC improvements, and we'll talk about that momentarily. And we did conduct and complete a design for the Haws Pool in FY23. Very quickly, taking us through the next slide, John, slide number six. This has to do with the repair and painting of the water tanks. Mr. Mizuko will speak to this. The work to do, to actually repair and painting, transition to a replacement of the water tanks, that we have a reference in the bullet, that StanTech is completing the process of assembling the data necessary to- of assembling the data necessary to complete the design and move that project into a construction as proposed in FY '24. Mr. Mizuko will certainly spend some time talking to us about that in the applicable motion for water rates. The next slide is a new council of aging van. I asked for this one to be put in, because the council of aging seldom asks the Capital Outlay for, for equipment or other requirements, and it's just nice that they put one request in, and we landed it, we got it approved. They now have the new, the new van, here's a nice picture of it. And this van is now being used by the council of aging. Next slide, just, next couple of slides are just some purchases that were on the FY '23 plan that have been accomplished. The cemetery now has a new backhoe, it's now in use. Next slide, we have a picture of the water improvement, year three, the standard picture of why we are replacing, and the, an aggressive timeline, relining of our pipelines. So, we see on the left, the, what pipe, what aging pipes can do, what they look like when they are in use for a long, long period of time. Water Department's been doing a great job. This is, this, the past year is year three of our improvement project, where we are relining projects, so your wa, the water coming into your home, it looks, that's that after picture, and I think anybody can see that that's dramatic improvement. Not only impacts water, water quality, but also the, the water pressure throughout the town when our pipes are relined. The ambulances, we purchased intentionally two ambulances instead of one at a time, because of the supply chain issues that we were dealing with in FY '23. In fact, we're pleased to say that after a long period of time waiting for these, they are now both in possession, and they are soon to be. I think one, I believe, is in service, and I believe the other one is, has been delivered. So, we, we've accomplished that. Parking lots, we annually take a look at our parking lots. Many of these parking lots are aging, and you see here, the Willett parking lot has been repaved. You see the differences there between what the existing was prior to the Capital Outlay plan from last year, and now we have a newly paved lot at Willett. Same with the Oldham. The pro, this project is substantially done. It should be done shortly and completed. Next slide is the public safety building. So, a couple of years ago, we did have a project for a $5 million expense to redo, entirely redo, the HVAC system in our public safety building, because it was historically failing, and it required a total replacement. We funded that initial $5 million project. Last year, we approved an additional $1.4 million from the transfer of unexpended bond proceeds to complete that project. So, we are continuing that original project. We still are dealing with a 30-week, 32-week lead time in obtaining the units. However, we do expect that this project will be completed in the spring. That's very welcome news. The design for the Hawes Pool on slide 14, it is a, you know, we do design projects, because this defines what, not only what our, our, our design for the Hawes Pool is, but it also is a detail that is needed for us to then go out and construct the pool. So, the design for the Hawes Pool has been accomplished, and that design is now leading us to an FY '24 project for construction of, of, of the Hawes Pool complex. Committee activity on slide 15. The Committee began its work in January 2023, and we continue to meet almost on a monthly basis through October of 2023. Primarily, our work for vetting and hearing about the proposed FY '24 plan takes place over the summer to prepare for this very meeting. So, our meetings consisted of presentations and Q and A's from our town management and our department heads. They come before us, they present their needs, they talk about the projects that they, they consider as important for the upcoming year, and we have an opportunity to vet those projects with them. We ask the project, as, we ask the town managers to provide us information on our financial situation. The Finance Commission has certainly outlined quite nicely. And this is usually a focus of, do we have opportunities to move some of our projects that are slated for borrowing to a cash basis? And since our free cash came in really early this year, we were able to, by, by October, to have a free cash number, it was a really solid number, we were able to move some projects that were borrowing, I think namely, the $2.8 million project that we usually borrow for, for road repair, road improvement in the paving area. We were able to move that project from borrowing to free cash, given the strength of our free cash number. We voted on October the 3rd to approve the capital improvement plan that you have here. We do agree, subsequent to, to that approval, we, you know, we, the selectmen have also agreed with the FinCom that the two projects that were listed in the, in the yellow sheets, that is, the, the construction of the Washington Street at Hawes Bridge, as well as the Savage Center parking lot, merited delaying those projects for a later date. So, you see that the plan we're presenting to you will not have those projects on it for FY '24 at this time. We usually, we do, the Capital Outlay also has a responsibility to, to vet and review the entire five-year plan that department heads and town manage, town management propose. So, that is also in the full report that you have access to. We have agreed as a body that in January of this year, the Capital Outlay will meet once again, so we can start working with town management on that, the, the, the projects, to review the projects coming up for FY '25, '26, '27, and '28. That's work to be done. And then, later in the year, we will then attack the, the funding and project list for FY '25. I just wanted to go to the next slide, John, on, on, on funding. And I'll take the left side of this, this slide, and Mr. Mizuko will take the right side, and then take us through the, the projects that are recommended for FY '24. So, our capital, our, our capital plan for, improvement plan for FY '24, in the left-hand column, you see that from the general fund, we are spending about one, we are spending $1,489,500 on capital expenses. Mostly, these are smaller projects and equipment and vehicle replacement. General fund borrowing, we have $10.7 million in general fund borrowing. That is specific to two projects, that is, the $5 million project to replace our traffic light system in the Washington Street, Manhattan Street corridor, as well as the $5.7 million project for reconstruction and improvement to the Hawes Pool complex. On the water side, we are using retained earnings, sort of the, a, a, a cash version of free cash, if you will, also to replace some equipment on the water side. And from a borrowing perspective, there are two projects that comprise that $19 million in $300,000 figure. They are the water tank replacement project, as well as our annual, I think we're going to year four of our water improvement project for pipelines. In total, that, that takes us to 30, a $34 million expense, of which about 86% of that are related to those four projects that we are borrowing for. Just to make a, a complete picture, that outlay looked at, there are two categories that aren't subject to town meeting vote, because they have been previously approved. That is, grant programs that support our stormwater work. We have two stormwater projects that are total about $2,655,000 worth of project work, funded through upper federal grants, not through the operating budget. And, speaking of the operating budget, previously in May, the town meeting did approve a number of capital improvement items. Mostly, these are, are vehicle purchases that, for example, the police chief, the police department puts forward annually, the replacement of several vehicles. That has already been approved, but it is a capital expense that we wanted to also include in our outline. That is the funding recap for the capital improvement plan. I'll let Mr. Mizuko speak to the funding balances prior, after this expense is hopefully approved, and speak to the projects as we go forward.
Thank you, Chairman Donnelly. If you look to the right side of the slide up there, the $12.9 million we came in at free cash this year is the highest level of free cash the town has ever achieved. I believe the Finance Commission explained why it was a particularly good year, but we have not had that level of free cash in our history. After capital projects, there are other items on the, warrant will be down to $11.4 million. We are using $2 million of the Forbes money, that is, so we can transfer free cash into the override stabilization. As Chairman Bodenhoffer, Bodenhoffer mentioned, the state generally does not set up its laws for towns to sell properties at a huge profit after three years. So, the state law wasn't really designed for us to just kind of come into a $10 million windfall. We wanted to be as conservative with it as we can, and the state worked with us and the Department of Revenue, after sort of slapping our hand, came up with some solutions of how we can get to where we want to go. There would still be $8 million remaining in the Forbes balance. The plan is, next year, at the Capital Outlay, we would do the same thing, use about $2 million of that money towards capital projects, and place $2 million of free cash into the regular or general stabilization fund. Water retained earnings is new, if you will, this year. This is part of going to a water enterprise fund, where this is money that was unexpended in the water fund for the year. It's a good target for the year, it does include the meter money, so we're looking to use some of that for capital projects this year. We had a particularly dry summer last year, which is why we had some good numbers. I don't think next year we'll achieve quite that level of number. Our stabilization fund at its highest balance in our history remains unchanged, and the override stabilization fund, as of today, is $936,000 that will go to $2.9 million, should town meeting vote to approve moving $2 million from free cash into that fund later this evening. John, if you could go to the next slide? Certainly, these will come up during the motions. This is the capital plan in its entirety. There are three projects I'd like to draw your attention to for a moment, if I could, particularly the three large borrowing projects. The first being the traffic signal project. This is our downtown traffic signal system. It is a fully integrated system, so it's all 11 traffic signals downtown. They all are supposed to work in concert. It is a 40-year-old system. It is failing on a regular basis. We spend probably $30,000 or $40,000 a year repairing it as it is. It does require an outside vendor to come in, just to keeping it, keep it working. They are supposed to be physically timed in sequence. What happens is, one of them gets out of sequence, and it causes a mess for traffic signal. This is not just a replacement of all the physical signals and the mast arms, it's all the underground infrastructure that's required to make that work as well. There are significant pedestrian improvements as well. Those of you who walk around downtown know that sometimes you hit the button, and it usually works. Sometimes they get stuck. It's just a 40-year-old system that's time to be, it has reached the end of its life cycle. The next large project at $5.7 million is the Hawes Pool. Hawes Pool is 70 years old. It is time for replacement. We did the bathhouse about six or seven years ago at a cost of about $1 million and a half dollars. The pool has been repaired and patched about as many times as it can be repaired and patched. It does currently leak quite a bit into the river. It's not a huge cost factor, it's only about $3,000 worth of water it leaks, but it is something like 600,000 gallons of water that it leaks. And as the Conservation Commission has reminded me, even though I think chlorine's probably not all that bad for a stream, we should not be leaking that level of chlorinated water into a stream. The final project is a replacement of our water tanks. As everyone knows, we have two water tanks serving the town located up at the cemetery. You can see them great from the high school, right from the field in this building with the wonderful new lights that are out there. These tanks were constructed in 1958, and in the late, the second tank was, or the first tank was built in the late 1930s. They are both reaching the end of their life cycle, which is a common theme for a lot of our capital projects. We're not doing a lot of the fun and exciting projects. You may see in other towns, we're really just replacing stuff that has really exceeded its lifespan. We looked at three options with those projects, repair both, repair one and replace the other, or replace both. Over 30 years, the cheapest cost was to replace both of them. If we simply repaired both of them for $4 or $5 million, we would be replacing one of them in about six or seven years, and then another one in about 10 years. If we did a one-on-one, we'd be looking at, again, more money in 10 or 12 years. The cheapest option over a 30-year period is to replace both tanks. We take care of the problem. We should not have to replace them for more than 50 years. The average lifespan of a tank can run from anywhere from 60 to 80 years. So, when that item comes up again at town meeting, there'll only be a few of us here in this room for that project. Other projects, again, the, the one theme with this year's capital plan, and it's most common with our capital plan every year, is it really is replacement and repair of existing equipment that has reached or far exceeded its life cycle. We try to get as much out of our projects and out of our buildings and out of our vehicles as we can, and I think the town has done a great job doing that, and we're certainly committed to continuing to do that. And with that, I will yield it back to you, Madam Moderator, for the first motion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mizuko. Well, there is a motion on the floor. So, motion number one, discussion on motion number one, which is a potpourri of all free cash items recommended by the Capital Outlay Committee and the FinCom. Mr. Hofkraff.
Mrs. Hofkraff, District 1, that little chart shows, I think, eight projects, which are pretty hard to read from here, but I think that's right, maybe nine. The yellow sheet showed 15, after you subtracted out two. What happened to the rest of them under Article 8? How much are we really appropriating here?
Ms. Bodenhoffer has that.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Most of the other projects are, will be in the remaining motions. There are five or six motions for Article 8. So, yes, six motions for Article 8. So, the, the projects that we are considering right now are general fund projects that would be paid out of free cash for a total of $1,489,500. Do you want me to read them again?
Mr. Hofkraff? Yeah, maybe I can help you a little bit here. The whole capital plan is actually a series of six different motions, which has been our practice, dividing them up to make them easier to debate and to do it by funding source.
I agree with that concept, and I understand that, but the yellow sheet shows 15 under Article 8. And so, if we only got whoever many are there, something is a little bit inconsistent, and I think it's unclear, certainly to me, where that.
Ms. Bodenhoffer.
The, the yellow sheet was created by the Board of Selectmen before the motions were drafted. So, that just lists all of the projects, it doesn't have them divided up into motions. The six different motions will be read individually, and we'll call out the projects individually for each of those six motions.
Thank you.
Savage Center and the other one are still on the yellow sheet. Does that went out before that change?
Right.
All right, seeing none. Up, Mr. Taylor, you got in there.
Jack Taylor, District 8. Madam Moderator, what are we voting on?
You're voting on these projects listed right here up on the slide. They're all through free cash. Those are the only ones you're voting on right now. That's the motion.
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
You're welcome. Ms. Neil Rizzo?
Is it possible to zoom in, or like make a figure?
You're, you're, you're asking, you're asking our new slide master to...
Madam Moderator, would you like me to?
Is that? Thank you, John. You didn't know you could do that. Anything else on the motion? These, these are the projects, again, as Ms. Bodenhoffer said, $1,489,500. And there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight different projects, all being funded through free cash. All right. Seeing no other hands raised, I'm going to put this to a vote. Again, hopefully, everybody understands, we are just voting on these projects here. This is the motion for $1,489,500, capital improvement plan projects, and set forth in the following table, monies to be transferred from free cash. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, please say yes. All those in favor, opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Ms. Bodenhoffer, motion number two on Article 8.
Moved by the Finance Commission that the town appropriate the sum of $10,700,000 to pay costs of the various fiscal year 2024 capital improvement plan projects in the amounts and for the purposes set forth in the following table, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to general law, Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. And further, that the selectmen are authorized to apply for and accept any grants or aids for the projects. are authorized to apply for and accept any grants or aids for the projects provided. However, that the amount of the authorized borrowing for any project shall be reduced by the amount of such grants or aid received prior to the issuance of bonds or notes hereunder. The two items in this table are the traffic signals for the Washington Street and the Houghton Street corridors for $5 million, borrowing over 20 years, and the Hawes Pool construction, borrowing, $5.7 million borrowing for 30 years.
All right, and Mrs. Sullivan is seconding. Anything on the motion?
FinCom has voted in favor of this motion.
Thank you. All right, I have one registered speaker on this, Mr. McFarland.
Forget the swab coffin. Hi, this is Peter McFarland, District 4. I'm also a member of the Commission on Disability. As you can see in the yellow sheets, the Commission on Disability voted unanimously in favor of this project. This update is long overdue. But we also had a lengthy conversation about the Lenox Street and the Houghton Street intersection. It needs more than just updated signals. It's a dangerous crossing, exceptionally wide, estimated to be about 50 to 60 feet across, with four unmarked lanes and vehicles driving extremely fast. We'd like to see a pedestrian island incorporated in this upgrade. As a motorist, there should be a dedicated left turn when you're driving east towards Route 1, going from the Houghton Street onto Lenox. And then there should be a designated left lane going into Dunkin' Donuts and into the police fire station. It doesn't need to be a designated right turn lane into Shaw's Plaza. Right on red should be sufficient there. Going westbound, there should be a designated left turn going into Lenox Street after the traffic light in front of the police fire station. So, we don't need to have unmarked lanes for this quarter of a mile of... It seems like the rest of the Houghton Street corridor has designated turning lanes, but this section was missed, and we have cars speeding and switching lanes, and exceptionally, with the exception of adding to the islands at Lenox and Houghton Street, the changes that I'm requesting would be more, more or less paint and post. So, I mean, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McFarland. I think Mr. Donnelly wants to respond to that.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So, although those specific changes that Mr. McFarland and the Commission have requested aren't included in this particular project, I, I think that they have merit, and, and I think that if the Commission should send those to the Board of Selectmen, we'll make sure that the Traffic Safety Committee has an opportunity to review those, those safety enhancements and come back with a recommendation to the Board for their consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Yes, ma'am, right there.
Hi, I'm Emily Holdley, District 6. I have a question about the Hawes Pool construction. My family uses Hawes Pool during the summers, and it's a great asset to the town. I'm just curious about the, the amount on the cost of the construction. Is that just for repair, not repairing, but replacing the pool itself, or are there other, going to be other improvements to the pool area?
I think Mr. Donnelly has that.
I, I noticed Mr. Kenny and, and our design engineer here, but just the, the short answer is that the enhancements will include a, a new pool, because the current one is, is crumbling, and it's, it's almost 80 years old. Adjacent to the pool, that, that pool, by the way, will also have a walk-in lane, so it will be available for people with disabilities to actually enter the pool without having to use a, an apparatus to do so. It'll also include, adjacent to the pool between, there'll be a peninsula between the larger pool and then a, a small wading pool, which will provide opportunities for children who can't swim in the large pool to go to the wading pool. It will have a new pump house, because the, the current system for pumping is, is deteriorating. It's, it's also very old. And there will also be some enhancements to the water spray park as well. So, it's, it's pretty much a total enhancement to every aspect of aquatic activity at the Hawes.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Morrison?
Rick Morrison, District 1. With regards to the Hawes Pool, so that doesn't include anything as far as enhancement of the parking that's there? It's just the pool itself?
Mr. Donnelly?
Just, just for the pool.
Are there, is there, in the future, is there any plans for renovating the parking or increasing the parking at the pool?
Mr. Mizuka?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, through you. I think there will be, we've acquired some of the properties in the area. We're probably going to want to get the pool project done, let the middle school project sort of get done. There's the bridge project, and there's the project in the space center, but one of the hopes is that we'll either be able to reconfigure that lot or possibly add some space to it once we're set with the middle school and we know what's going on. We know what it looks like, I should say.
To the town manager, Madam Moderator, I know we had a discussion before about, it was brought up at a previous town meeting, about possibly one of those properties, the first property by the pool there that was bought by the town, to include additional parking for the fields up there and try and solve that problem once and for all, because it's a unique opportunity to solve that problem. So, I don't know if that would be tangent to the pool, to the Hawes Pool parking or whatever, but I hope that that's in the, on the radar.
Mr. Mizuka?
Yes, absolutely, it, it is. I think you'll likely see some parking in that area. If nothing else, we might be able to reconfigure that lot without a whole lot of changes now that we own that piece of property. The Light Department also owns property on Short Street that we may not need in the future, and that could possibly become parking. That hasn't been looked at yet, but it's always sort of been out there if we don't need that lot anymore.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just a question on the traffic signals. I understand that the $5 million covers the Washington Street and the Ponce Street corridors, and long overdue, and money well spent. My question is, the signals planned, or maybe not planned, for the rotary further down on 1A, on the other side of the bridge, is that in, is that in the works? And if so, could you comment on that?
Who's going to take that?
Mr. Ryan.
Miss... He's going to go right up. You'll let him use his mouth.
Madam Moderator, so, Mr. Thornton, which signals are you, you talking about?
Mr. Ryan, are you going to identify yourself to police?
Of course.
Everybody knows you, but, you know, just in case.
Absolutely. My apologies. Mark Ryan, Director of Public Works, Town Engineer. I'm just a little confused, the location, the signals you're talking about?
So, I'm not really sure, but I, I don't know if there was anything planned for the rotary on the other side of the bridge.
You're talking about Prospect Street?
Prospect.
Oh, of course, yeah. So, that's a project that was recently bid. PGOSO and Sons were the low bidder for $9.8 million. DHB is a traffic designer for that. It's a state project. Mass DOT is going through the review of the bid, and we anticipate construction to start in the spring.
Thank you.
Hi, Amy Sobchak, District 4. I didn't want to bring, I know I'm kind of jumping the gun, but I guess it has to be questioned with this article. I'm curious about the $2 million that we're using from the Forbes estate. My understanding was it needed to be used on capital projects. I see that we're using it on roadwork. My understanding of a capital project is that you buy, you, you borrow to purchase some sort of, I'm trying to think of the right word, capitalized asset. I, I'm, I'm curious as to whether or not the state has actually approved that a road is a capitalized asset, and if so, why aren't we using it to, to maybe lessen the burden of the tax of the borrowing on this, rather than using it on roads? Because I really don't see how a road is a capitalized asset.
Mr. Mizuka? I'll allow it, Mrs. Sobchak, because we're kind of talking about, yeah, but let's, let's explain it, because it's about the capital plan.
Absolutely, thank you. So, through you, Madam Moderator, the state does allow you to borrow for roads. They are a capital asset. It's a significant infrastructure piece that the town owns. We own over 150 miles of road. It's, if you were to try to value it, it's worth 70, 80, 90 million dollars. Roads can only be borrowed for 15 years, though, so the decision to apply the Forbes money to that bond was strategic, because it'll have less of an impact on the operating budget than if we instead applied it to this project, because you can borrow for longer for both intersections or the pool project.
Okay, thank you.
And Ms. Taylor, did I see your hand up, or no? You changed your mind?
I changed my mind.
Okay, you're allowed. All right, in the back.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Chris Jordan, District 4. On a 30-year note for the pool, can we anticipate that this pool will survive the 30 years?
Mr. Mizuka?
Thank you. The short answer is yes, the current pool is 70 years old, so I'd, the new pool will last 30 years. The state actually sets a framework for how long we're allowed to borrow for. Our engineers have to verify, and Bond Council has to verify, that they feel that a life of a project is appropriate for that level of time. We can't go beyond 30 years, but again, the current asset has lasted 70 years.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Taylor, you, you changed your mind, but I'm going to have, what we, next, okay? We'll have Ms. Taylor. Kevin, why don't you go to, Ms. Taylor keeps changing her mind over there, we'll...
Just give her the mic.
Madam Moderator, Jean Taylor, District 8. I thought you had changed your mind, and you weren't going to let me speak. Just quickly, when we're doing all the construction at Hawes Brook Pool and in that area, could we take into consideration any of the businesses there that may be affected by all of the disruption? And maybe have a contact person? I know it's very difficult at times. I know down, when the parking lot was being done down by the airport, you know, it's difficult to keep communication with the businesses all the time. So, if we could maybe, you know, have one person do that? And if I may, with the, Mr. McFarland making the suggestions that he has made for that committee, I think they're great suggestions. However, when it's being looked at, please cross out any irons of any kind on the Houghton Street. We actually have one at the end of my street that I would like to see them take out. That, that was all. See, that's why I said I changed my mind. They weren't that important. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. And I did see, I heard, did somebody else change their mind in the back? Yep, I guess so. Mr. Greeley.
Joe Greeley, Joe Greeley, still Joe Greeley, District 6. Relative to the Hawes Pool construction, I think it was about a year and a half to maybe two years ago, through Mr. Ryan's direction and the amazing work of the DPW yet again, they created what's probably the closest thing to an ADA accessible walking path around the two Hawes, the two smaller Hawes ponds. Stone dust, it's, it's head and shoulders leaps and bounds better than it used to be. There's no tree roots, and if anyone from in-town or out-of-town asks, does Noah have any ADA accessible or mobility friendly, as I think the way we describe it, walking paths, we always send them to Hawes, because it's a really, it, it, you know, thank you, thank you to all that participated, because it's a real facelift to that area. My question is relative, relative to the, the leg, if you will, that comes in from Washington Street, the sidewalk. The DPW created, or they formalized the path such that, the walking path such that it comes in from the Washington Street sidewalk, almost directly from the front door of the Brookside. Anybody, anybody who maybe can't get into the parking lot, or they're walking along the sidewalk, they can just come right in through that probably 12-foot wide gate, and they're immediately on that walking path. So, my question is, and that path, by the way, is dead center between the pool and the Brook. So, my question, maybe about the design of the construction, are we contemplating anything that might impact that walking path? And if so, could that, is there a need, and could I recommend that we reconstruct that post-construction?
Who's going to, who's going to take that one?
You can just say no, and we'll look.
Come on down. And also, please identify yourself also.
I'm Rob Marklow, I'm with Cusinieri Architects, with Architect Record on the project. So, the, the area that you're speaking in regard to, we, we've actually increased that area. The existing pool house is located fairly clo, or, excuse me, the mechanical room is located fairly close to the Brook. So, part of the effort of this project is actually to pull those systems and the chemicals within that building further away. So, actually, there'll be a wider berth between any infrastructure related to the pool and the Hawes Brook.
Is there a follow-up, Mr. Greeley, or are you good?
No, I think we're good. Thank you for the consideration. I, as a, as a user of both Hawes Pool and Fox Max Pool, I think the project is well, long overdue. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any more hands, so let's put it to a vote. This is going to be a two-thirds majority, because it involves borrowing. And again, it's that the town appropriated the sum of $10,700,000 to pay the cost of various fiscal year capital improvement projects. Funding source is borrowing. The traffic signals and the Hawes Pool construction as outlined in the motion. All those in favor, say yea?
Yea.
All those opposed, say no? It's unanimous. Motion carries. Article 8, motion three, Ms. Bodenhoffer.
Motion by the Finance Commission, moved that the town appropriate the sum of $18,676,950 to pay costs of the various fiscal year 2024 capital improvement plan projects in the amounts and for the purposes set forth in the following table, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to general law, Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, provided that while the bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the town, the debt service shall be payable in the first instance from water rates, and further that the selectmen are authorized to apply for and accept any grants or aid for the projects provided, however, that the sum, sorry, that the amount of the authorized borrowing for any project shall be reduced by the amount of any such grants or aid received prior to the issuance of bonds or notes hereunder. All and any portion of the amount authorized to be borrowed by this vote may be obtained through the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, the trust, and the treasurer and any other appropriate official or officials of the town are authorized to execute and deliver any and all agreements with the trust or the Commonwealth's Department of Environmental Protection that may be required in connection therewith. The two projects on this plan are the design and replace of the water tanks for $14,176,950, and the water improvement, excuse me, water improvement program of $4,500,000.
And Ms. Sullivan is seconding.
Yes.
Anything on the motion, Ms. Bodenhoffer?
FinCom has voted to recommend this motion.
Okay. This is also a borrowing motion. It will be two-thirds. The extra language is also referring to the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust as a possibility that, that, under Chapter 29(c), that the... under Chapter 29(c), that the town may take advantage of that. Anyone on the motion? Any questions, discussion on the motion? Mr. Esco.
Steve Esco, District 5. Through you, Ms., Madam Moderator, could I have an explanation, the purpose of the water tanks, as to how they work within our system, please?
I think Mr. Ryan is going to take that.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Mark Ryan, Director of Public Works and Town Engineer. I also have Elise Dubois from StanTech Consulting, who is our consultant for our water projects. They've been with us for many years. Initially, our Facebook and Thon Dyke. Now they're at StanTech. They're an international firm. They're experts in the field and we're very fortunate to have them. So Elise is here with me if there are any particular questions I cannot handle. John, could you show the slide? The one that shows the two of them. It's like in the... Thank you, John. So, town meeting members, so our water system is a very important part of what is Norwood. Mr. Shaughnessy in the Light Department, and I would probably have a pretty good debate what's more important, our water system or the electric system. But clean water is very important. I think we all understand that. We have two water tanks up near the high school. We have a 4-million-gallon tank, which is the bigger tank, which is to the, to the left in that picture. That was constructed in 1958 or 1959, around that time, and it's 65 years old. And the life expectancy of a water tank is 80 years. The tank to the right, which is the elevated water tank, was built in 1939. That's 85 years old come next year. It's well past its useful life. But those are the bread and butter of our water system, providing storage throughout the day, volumes during fire flows, in the event that the MWRA can't deliver the water for whatever reason, there's a one-day supply there, which would benefit the hospital, schools, residents, businesses throughout the town. As a requirement to maintain your water system, you must maintain your water tanks. These water tanks were last attended to back in the year 2000. Every 20 years, you should be doing this. We're 23 years beyond the last time it was worked on. And the work required requires the exterior to be recoded. That's stripping off any of the coating there and putting back a new coating, and that's to protect the steel from losing any more thickness. And you must also go in the inside of the tank. You're going to drain the tank and redo the coating on the inside. In addition to that, there's a lot of upgrades that need to be made to meet current OSHA codes. Entryways have to be widened. You see the half-million-gallon tank to the right there has a walkway around it much too narrow. That has to be widened. Anchor bolts, anchor bolts, excuse me, have to be replaced. Foundations have to be repaired. There's quite a bit of work involved. If we were to go ahead with the initial proposal to just rehab these two tanks, it would cost $4.6 million. The problem with that, you have one tank that's past its useful life, that one to the right. So within five years, you'd have to replace that tank. The tank to the left is 65 years old now. In 15 years, it's going to be past its useful life. That would have to be replaced. So as we discussed this, it was quite obvious that throwing $4.6 million towards rehabbing these, and then within five years replacing one, and within 15 years replacing the other, we should start looking at, do we replace one or both of them? We looked at a second option, where we replace the half-million-gallon tank, that's the one to the right, and rehab the larger one, the 4-million-gallon tank. That price tag came in around $9 million. Now, these are just construction costs. The problem with that is, yes, you replace the half-million-gallon tank with the 1.5-million-gallon tank, but you still have a 4-million-gallon tank, that bigger one. We are facing a lot of water quality issues now with the system out there. Basically, what it comes down to, most of that water in that big 4-million-gallon tank is not used. There's a whole engineering thing with height differentials in relation to houses and things of that nature, providing the proper pressures. But we're having a real serious problem with stagnant water in there. And if we went ahead with option two of replacing the one tank and rehabbing the other, those stagnant water and water quality issues will not go away. And then in the end, in 15 years, we're going to have to replace that larger tank. So we went ahead and looked at option three, replacing both tanks. We would replace it with two tanks, 1.5 million gallons each, that would provide the required water storage for the town in Norwood now and into the future. The engineering firm did some analysis on businesses coming into town as well as residents. This project came in around $12.3 million, and it made the most sense. It's the most expensive, but over the long term, over the life expectancy, this is the right choice. So before you tonight, we're looking to, for four point, 14, over $14 million to replace the two tanks. Now, the $14 million includes the $12.3 for the construction plus engineering costs, plus design costs, and plus some contingency that's put in there. We currently have an application into the state for this, which really advantageous about the Clean Water Trust, if, when we get this grant or this loan, excuse me, it's a loan. It's a 30-year loan. It's 2.4% interest, which is very favorable. And any of the payments on this loan would not start until the construction is complete on this project. If this to go forward, we are in fact in design now. It will be designed till July of '24. Anticipate opening bids in October, August, October of '24, and start construction in January of '25. So it's a three-year window approximately of construction. We anticipate sometime late fall, early winter of '28, calendar year '28, of being completed with the project. So any payments on the loan would not start till fiscal '29. So after a lot of review by the engineering at StanTech, ourselves within the town, it just made the most sense to go ahead and rehab, replace these two water tanks. And, you know, there might be a question why we need water tanks. I think I touched on a little bit before. We are served by the MWRA. We do have two pipes coming in that, they basically lead from the same source, the Bellevue tank in West Roxbury. If any of those lines along that distribution broke down, if we didn't have water tanks, we would be out of water. Having the water tanks provides the necessary storage for one day, the volume that we need, provides the necessary fire flows out there. It's the most effective, efficient, cost-conscious way to run a water system. We looked at the five area towns, and between the five area towns bordering us, they have 19 water tanks. So the reason we have water tanks is because they, like I said, the most efficient, cost-effective way to transport water through your water system. And hopefully, Mr. Moderator, that's answers the question?
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Is there a follow-up, Mr. Esco?
Do I have a follow-up, Madam Moderator?
Sure.
I'm just kind of curious. You mentioned how the water in the tank is stagnant. What if tomorrow we lost the main water line coming in from MWRA? How is that water refreshed, yes, or filtered for residential use? If we've got stagnant water up there, is it somehow rather go through a process from the water tanks to residential homes?
Madam Moderator, no, there's no treatment once it leaves the tank. Stagnant water is typically problematic during the warmer periods of time. We do have it this time of year, but not as, as much. But the water is not treated when it leaves the tank.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Kevin Wright.
Thank you. Carol McClay, District 8. I'm just curious about the building of the new water tanks. Will we leave those up while we build the new ones?
Madam Moderator, no, we would take one down at a time. So we would take the elevated one, the one on the legs there down. We would build that replacement tank, 1.5 million gallons, and then we would take the other tank down and construct the new tank in its place.
Thank you.
Is there a right at the end there, Kevin?
Jo Di Maria, Norwood.
Hi, Jo.
I am a little concerned about what I just heard. We're going to build two new water tanks. They have water in them that are only good for about a day. Why do we do that? Why do we have water tanks if it's only good for a day and it's not good at all if it's a couple of years old? Why don't we have, if we're doing that, have some sort of project that moves the water around so that it's water, useful water all of the time if we should need it? It seems ridiculous to have a water tank that if we should need it, is not healthy for people to use. Thank you.
Mr. Ryan, you want to take that?
Yes, Madam Moderator. And that's the whole goal of this, is to have more usable water, not water that is stagnant. Plus, these two tanks, when they're constructed, will have mixers in there. They'll keep the water moving within the tank so you don't have that stagnation that you, that we're having now in that larger tank especially.
All right. We've got one right back there.
Hi, Steve Rogers, District 1. Move the question.
All right, do I have a second? All right, Mr. Miller. Again, non-debatable, two-thirds vote. Question has been moved. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no?
No.
Yeah, well, nice try on the loud voice, but clearly we had the two-thirds on that. So the question has been called. We go back to the motion, which is on Article 8. I am not going to read that whole thing. Please feel free to do so. It is for borrowing. It is two-thirds. We're talking about the design and replace water tanks for $14,176,950 and the water improvement program for $4,500,000. All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries. I will say it was unanimous with a couple of murmurs. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Okay, Article 8, motion for Ms. Bodenhoffer.
Motion by the Finance Commission, moved that the town appropriate the sum of $2 million to pay a portion of the costs of the road repair program, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, $2 million is transferred from the proceeds of the sale of the Forbes estate for such project.
And Ms. Sullivan, you are seconding. Anything on the motion, Ms. Bodenhoffer?
Just briefly, we normally have three pots of money that we use to pay for roads. We use Chapter 90 money from the state. We have some money in our regular operating budget that's ongoing. And then, I think it was in 2020, we started a program. We said for five years, we're going to borrow some money every year so that we can accelerate roadwork and get caught off on some projects that we are behind on. Because this year, we have so much free cash, instead of proposing borrowing, we're taking that, what would normally be $2.8 million in borrowing, we did $800,000 from free cash, and now we're recommending $2 million from the Forbes proceeds.
Thank you, Ms. Bodenhoffer. Anything on the motion? Seeing none, let's put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, and this is a majority, to appropriate the sum of $2 million from the Forbes estate proceeds for the purpose of the road repair program, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 8, motion 5, FinCom, Ms. Bodenhoffer.
Moved that the town appropriate the sum of 300, I'm sorry, $630,000 to pay costs of the fiscal year 2024 Capital Improvement Plan project entitled Water Main Cleaning and Lining MWRA Grant Loan as set forth in the following table in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, the MWRA, Local Water Systems Assistance Program, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen is authorized to borrow said amount at no interest from the MWRA under and pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Section 8, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. And further, that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to expend said sum for said purpose, or, and to take any other action necessary to carry out the project.
All right. And Ms. Sullivan, you're seconding again? Anything on the motion, Ms. Bodenhoffer?
As a reminder, this is that zero-interest loan, and FinCom has recommended this motion.
And this also takes a two-thirds majority as it is borrowing. Mr. Brody.
Can you get to the line?
Well, hold on. Can you wait for the mic?
Steve Brody, District 4. Can you please enlarge? Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Lynch.
Ed Lynch, District 7. What's the water retained earnings?
Mr. Mizuko.
Water retained, water retained earnings, it's like free cash for the water fund. So all of our water expenses go into a, all of our water revenue goes into a fund. All of our water expenses come out of that fund. Whatever's left in that pot is called retained earnings. It works similar to free cash, but just for the water sewer enterprise fund.
Thank you.
Anything further? Seeing none, let's put it to a vote. Again, this is Article 8, motion 5. It's a borrowing motion for the Water Main Cleaning Lining MWR Grant Loan, $630,000. It's part of the Capital Improvement Plan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. It's unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you. Ms. Bodenhoffer, you're on a roll. Article 8, motion 6.
This is the final motion for Article 8. Moved that the town appropriate the sum of $506,000 to pay costs of the various fiscal year 2024 Capital Improvement Plan projects in the amounts and for the purposes set forth in the following table, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, $506,000 shall be transferred... and that to meet this appropriation, $506,000 shall be transferred from water retained earnings for such projects. The two projects here are a water utility truck for $175,000 and a street sweeper for $331,000.
And Ms. Sullivan is seconding? Anything on the motion?
FinCom has voted in favor of this motion.
All right. Mr. Hearn.
Thank you. David Hearn, District Four. Echoing a question we had a few moments ago. This is coming out of, proposed to come out of water retained earnings. So Mr. Mizuka just said that's like free cash for water and sewer projects. I understood. But this is for two items for the Highway Department, not the Water and Sewer Department. May we have an explanation on why it's not being used for water and sewer purposes?
Mr. Mizuka?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, through you. We are, the way the capital plan categorizes it, highway for times has been a catch-all for all public works projects. This is the water utility truck used by the Water Utility Department. The street sweeper is actually technically a stormwater expense, and our drain maintenance expense is included within the sewer budget. Now, last year, we purchased the sewer vacuum truck out of the general fund with the idea that that should have come out of water retained earnings. We didn't have water retained earnings, that paying for that out of free cash and this project out of water retained earnings would keep the general fund whole.
Follow-up, Mr. Hearn?
Well, I'm wondering how many more things we can say relate to water when they seem clearly to belong to the Department of Public Works, sweeping the streets, which may have an effect on drains. And the water utility truck, is that the truck that goes around to water plants?
No. With all due respect, Madam Moderator, I'm creative, I am not that creative. It's the actual truck used by the water department when they're making repairs or working on water pipes and water projects in town.
Okay. I appreciate that.
It sounds an awful lot like water, Mr. Hearn.
There's water in there, I'm sure.
Yeah. In fact, I'm going to drink some while you're asking your question.
That's great. One other question. Can we know how much is in the water retained earnings fund?
Okay, I think Mr. Mizuka is pulling it up.
Yeah, if you give me one second, I will pull up the number. We had the slide up earlier. Just take me a second to get through my slides here. So water retained earnings started off at $1.6 million minus capital projects of $506,000 and minus a appropriation for meters, which is money collected for meters, there will be $472,000 left in retained earnings at the close of this town meeting.
And Madam Moderator, may I ask, how much money has been collected for water meters, based on the water meter charge? There may be a follow-up.
Sorry. That number is the number that we collect and program in the budget for water meters. There's two articles later on on water meters.
How much has been collected?
$673,000.
Are you telling us that you're spending all of the money that's been collected for water meters?
Yes.
From the current fiscal year?
That's not related to this article, but yes.
Yeah, when we get to that article, Mr. Hearn.
I understand, but we keep using the term water retained earnings, and I'm trying to distinguish between what is from one group and what is from another. So the water retained earnings, we're spending on these two items, which are innately, I've been told, related to the water system. Those are not from the water meter fund?
No, for these two projects, no, it's not.
Not these two, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Sobchak.
Amy Sobchak, District Four. Just a quick question. You said that the water retained earnings fund is a new fund this year. Where did that money come from?
Mr. Mizuka?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. It's a new fund last year. More than a year ago, town meeting voted to establish a water enterprise fund, or water sewer enterprise fund. So beginning last July 1st, all money collected for water and sewer went into the enterprise fund. All expenses were paid out of that fund. This is the retained balance after June 30th.
Thank you.
Mr. Palmetier.
I'm not sure my question is entirely related to this motion, but because this is the last.
Mr. Palmetier.
I'm sorry, Brian Palmetier, District Eight.
Thank you.
The, since this is the last motion of the set, I guess I wanted to ask a question about something that's been left out, that was in the capital improvements list that we got, and it was part of the presentation we got of, you know, information before. And it had to do with the two stormwater things. Do we not need to vote on that because it's grant-funded, maybe? I know it was, we're talking about the Meadowbrook Channel improvements and the Hennessy Retention Basin. Do we, I know sometimes we have to vote to accept a grant. Are we, can you explain to me why it was left out of our decision-making tonight?
Mr. Mizuka, you want to take that?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Moderator, through you to the body. Correct, those are grants that, those funds have already been appropriated or have already been applied. Town meeting generally does not appropriate grants. Sometimes there's a requirement to come before town meeting. It's not the case with the ARPA funds, which were the funds paying for those two projects. We, just as a follow-up, we tend to present the capital plan at the outset as a holistic view of everything we're doing, knowing that some of it's already been approved by town meeting, some of it is already in the operating budget, and some of it may come from grants. But just to make sure that the plan maintains a full picture of everything we're doing.
So I guess my follow-up then would be.
Go ahead.
Madam Moderator. If someone wants to have input on that or wants to understand better, is that something that's done through the selectmen? Who's the, who is the authority that works out where those funds are spent, how there's fun? You know, for example, if I wanted to say, I don't like a straight line, I think it should meander more in the retention basin, who do I talk to about that?
Mr. Mizuka?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. You can reach out to the manager's office. The actual process for those projects will be a lengthy one involving a lot of public input in the actual design and implementation.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmetier. Ms. Homewood. Yeah, Kevin, take a seat.
Debbie Homewood, District Three. Are we making more than we're spending on water?
Ms. Homewood, could you also make sure you put the mic down?
Sorry.
Can you repeat your question?
Are we making more than we're spending on water if we have $673,000 left?
So to be clear, that 600, thank you, Madam Moderator, the $673,000 is the meter charge that was collected. It goes into the fund. We're adjusting that in the budget in the future, so we won't have to separately appropriate it. It's, the expense is there. The water sewer fund always has to operate at surplus. If it operates at a loss, it comes out of free cash. In a year, we base our expenses and our revenues, just like any other business, on what we anticipate really for selling for water. In a dry season, we will sell a lot more water. Conversely, this year, it's a fairly wet season. I don't think our water sewer earnings are going to be where they are at the end of this fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any, I see nothing further, so let's put this to a vote. And again, this is using water retained earnings for replacing a water utility truck and a street sweeper for a total of $506,000. All those in favor, please say yea. All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on to Article Nine. Ms. Bodenhoffer, by the FinCom.
Moved that the town appropriate the sum of $60,000 from free cash to pay costs of the public safety staffing study.
And Ms. Sullivan, you're seconding that? Thank you. Ms. Bodenhoffer, anything on the motion?
Just that the FinCom has approved this.
Okay. Any discussion? Mr. Mizuka, I guess, does have something on the motion.
Just very briefly, this appropriation is for a third-party public safety staffing study. We have not conducted one since about 2011.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's put it to a vote, and this is for $60,000 from free cash for a public safety study, and I believe this is on both the Police Department and the Fire Department. All those in favor, please say yea. All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Ms. Bodenhoffer, Article Ten.
Moved that the town appropriate the sum of $150,882.68 from the National Opioid Settlement to be utilized by the Norwood Health Department, spent at the discretion of the Superintendent of Public Health and his or her designee.
Seconded by Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Anything on the motion?
FinCom has voted in favor of this, but this is grant money, basically, that can only be spent on this thing, but it just has to be appropriated by town meeting.
And again, I believe this is part of, this is part of the National Opioid Settlement. We're unclear as to whether this will be one-time or be, Mr. Mizuka will clarify?
Thank you, yeah. The Department of Revenue, the way they set this up, this is money from the National Opioid Settlement. It can only be spent for certain items by the Health Department related to dealing with substance abuse and the impacts of the opioid crisis. It's a 15- to 20-year settlement, so there will be an amount every year. It's not as much after this. The Department of Revenue hasn't clarified whether we'll have to continue to come back every year to use money from the opioid settlement for the things that we legally can only use it from said settlement for. Just a quirk in the municipal finance law.
Ms. Taylor.
Jean Taylor, District Eight. It's nice to see money coming in for such an epidemic that we have through you. May I ask our, Ms. Lane, Stacy, what the department is maybe planning on doing and how to apply some of this money? I do get concerned, I know we need the money, but I keep watching people being added to our Health Department. And as wonderful, Ms. Lane, as I know you are, there's an awful lot of work that they're placing on you, and is it being overburdening to you?
Thank you.
Ms. Lane, and can you also introduce yourself, please? In case somebody.
Stacy Lane, Superintendent Director of the Health Department. And with this money, we will, now that you, now that it's been, if it is appropriated to the Health Department, we'll put together other community partners, very important partners, to help decide what this is used on. And like Mr. Mizuka said, it can only be used on certain things. So we'll work with EMS, Police Department, School Department on figuring out how to best utilize this money. And also, we want to involve the people most affected by this, and that's people who have been suffering because of the opioid epidemic. So we'll come up with prevention, harm reduction, and other public health activities like that. And, no, it is work for the department, but no, we don't plan on adding any personnel.
I was putting the mic to my mouth, and you, that's what I was going to ask you. I don't, I'm not saying that it's not right to add to the department in helping you. My concern is that there's an awful lot on your shoulders that's being placed there. We have a lot of grants, and so there's a lot of new personnel, and I know that you have to keep track of that, and you have a three-member board, but I get concerned. That's all.
Thank you, I appreciate it, but I have a wonderful team and a lot of support from, from you all and from other departments, so, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Thank you, Ms. Lane. Anything further? Seeing none, let's put this to a vote. Article Ten. And basically, this is appropriating the sum of $150,882.68 from the National Opioid Settlement to be utilized by the Health Department. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Article Eleven, Ms. Bodenhoffer.
Motion by the Finance Commission, moved that the sum of $670,000 be appropriated from water and sewer retained earnings for the purchase and installation of water meters and automatic water meter reading devices and related appurtenances? I don't know how to say that word, sorry. For the Department of Public Works.
And that's seconded by Ms. Sullivan? Who can't pronounce it either?
I should have read this more carefully when I first looked at it.
All right. Anything on the motion?
FinCom is in favor of this. As we said, this is the money left over from last year that went into the water meter fund, and so now this is appropriating it so that we can spend it.
All right. Anything on the motion? Mr. Taylor.
Jack Taylor, District Eight. Madam Moderator, through you. Does that mean we're going to get new meters? Because I have to get out every month to the cellar and send a reading in. I don't get paid for that. So I hope I get a new meter. Me and Dave needs a meter too, I think, don't you?
All right, so Mr. Taylor wants to be first on the list? Mr. Mizuka will answer that.
We'll make, thank you, Madam Moderator. I will make sure Mr. Taylor is first on the list. Yes, this is money raised from the meter fee last year that we're appropriating for meters. The next article is current year money for meters, and then the budget going forward, we shouldn't have to go through this exercise every year. We are still facing a significant backlog in physically getting meters from a vendor. It's probably the, you heard earlier about 30 and 40-week lead times. I've never seen anything this ridiculous in terms of actually physically getting meters in so we can install them. COVID was four years ago at this point. I don't know what's going on.
All right. Anything further? Yes, sir, in the back. He's coming right around.
Michael Berger, District Three. A gentleman came probably about a month, maybe six weeks ago, to read our meters. My understanding is the new meters are going to go directly to the Water Department, and it won't be necessary to read meters anymore. That's what this is all about, is that right?
Mr. Mizuka?
So the current meters actually are able to do that when they're working. It's not actually the meter as much as it is the transmission unit. This is appropriating money to make sure we can continue to replace them. We have a backlog. We continue appropriating money and trying to get vendors to deliver us the number that we need. We only have one water meter technician who usually works on installs and work on problems, but this is money from, collected last year to replace meters that we'd like to spend on meters if we could just go buy them. And again, I say meters, it really is the reader on top of the meter that transmits it.
All right, so there won't be, there won't be a necessity for somebody to come into the basement to read the meter?
Correct.
Okay, and it's just not functioning the way it's supposed to? That's why this fellow happened to be there that particular day, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Ms. Homewood?
Debbie Homewood, District Three. Have we, we're paying for our meters, correct?
Yes.
And then we're paying for them again? Or we're appropriating money to pay for them again?
Mr. Mizuka, you want to?
It's as simple as I can put it, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I almost want to defer to Mr. Hearn for the answer on this, but about 20 years ago, we established a fee for meters to make sure that we can regularly replace meters. For many years, it was deferred to other areas in the general fund. It now goes to paying for meters. As we've switched to an enterprise fund, we've had to just move the money around. Remember, the state is very restrictive in how we move it around, but with the number of customers, we have a certain number of meters or meter readers will need to be replaced every single year. So this is for a regular replacement of meters annually.
For everyone?
Forever, yes. As long as you have water.
So if the meter in anybody's house dies, but you've already paid for it, are you going to pay for it again?
You personally will not pay for that meter. The town comes in and replaces the meter.
We'll talk later.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Homewood. Mr. Di Maria.
Justice Di Maria, District Two. Some number of years ago, many, many years ago, I think, we all voted, or many of us, voted to spend mon- we all voted, or many of us, voted to spend money to have our meters checked or replaced. And all of the meters in Norwood were replaced. And a new fund was raised so that that money would be paid for. And then money would be put aside every year, every day, every time you paid your bill, to go on and replace the money, replace your... Building. My question is, why are we doing, looking for more money? When in fact, we have a bill that goes out that's supposed to be replacing them? What's going on with the money that we obviously paid for? With the money for the job that we did so long ago that I can't remember when it was? And I can't... I doubt whether any many, many of you know or remember when all your water was replaced, water meters, meters were replaced, and this new bill went up. When you pay your bill, look at it. You pay a bill, and then there's a fee for fixing, for replacing the water. Where is that replacing the water money going to? And why are we asking for more?
All right. So we've got Ms. Bodenhoffer and Mr. Mizuko. Why don't we start with Ms. Bodenhoffer? And I think this is a little... We've been discussing this for a while now. Go ahead.
So you are correct that we do collect money? And that money was collected in FY '23? And this is to take that money that was collected for water meters and appropriate it to spend it for water meters in FY '24? So it's really just a housekeeping thing? We're not asking for any more money? We're just asking for permission to spend it for the thing we collected it for? And it's like a weird thing that's happening right now because of the switch over to the enterprise fund. It's a little housekeeping issue.
She has it.
Mr. Chen.
Michael Chen, District Five, move the question.
All right. Question's been moved and seconded. All those in favor moving the question, say aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. That takes us to the actual motion on Article 11 to appropriate the sum of $670,000 from Water and Sewer retained earnings for the purchase and installation of water meters and automatic water meter reading devices. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. That takes us to Article 12. This article is about using the money that has just been appropriated by actually amending the budget. Ms. Bodenhoffer.
Moved by the Finance Commission that the FY '24 Water and Sewer Budget be amended by increasing the expense line for water meter replacement by the sum of $670,000 for the purpose of operation of the Town of Norwood Municipal Water and Sewer System.
Seconded by Ms. Sullivan. I think this is pretty clear what we're doing here. We're actually amending the budget so we can spend the money for the new water meters. Anything on the motion? Mr. Hearn.
Madam Moderator, David Hearn, District Four. I wonder if anyone can tell me how much we've collected in each of the last three fiscal years for water meter charges? We heard a moment ago from Mr. Di Maria referring to what, for some of us, is ancient history, when we voted a meter charge with the promise that it would be used to replace meters on a regular basis and not just when they broke? Because that's... These water meters are, in fact, the cash register of our town. And they wear out. So I wonder if somebody can tell me, maybe Ms. Hearn has the information available on behalf of the Finance Department or whoever has it, how much was collected in each of the last three fiscal years, '21, '22, and '23?
All right. Who wants to take that? Ms. Hearn, do you have it? Okay. Let's move the microphone over. And why don't you identify yourself also, so you can introduce yourself to town meeting?
Hello, my name is Mollya Hearn, and I'm the Assistant Finance Director. In fiscal year '23, approximately $1 million was collected in the AMR Fund. It's approximately $1 million in '22 as well. And approximately $1 million in '21.
All right. So, Madam Moderator, my follow-up question is, with $1 million a year being collected for a very specific purpose, as was promised approximately 20 years ago, why aren't we appropriating the $1 million that we told people it would be used for? And I've asked this question before, and it seems to me that it's just we're moving money around. But nobody's answering the question of why... And I guess there is a follow-up to that, but maybe we can get the answer to that. Why aren't we spending the $1 million that was collected?
Mr. Mizuko, are you taking it?
Yes, thank you. The fee for the meter was artificially raised about four years ago to balance the budget, which we've done for years. We've been stopping doing that. The money still goes into the water fund. The $670,000 is that target number that we would want to replace meters with. We're undergoing a rate study now. We mentioned this back in May. When that rate study is done, it will reset the meter rate to lower than it is today, balancing out the collection for this year.
Follow-up, Mr. Hearn?
Yes, please. How much does it cost to replace a water meter?
Mr. Ryan.
Madam Moderator, Mark Ryan, Director of Public Works, Town Engineer. The actual water meter cost to DPW is $265. That's just for residential. The meter transmitting unit is another $110. And then you have installation costs could be anywhere from $150 to $200, depending upon if DPW does it or if the contractor that we have does it.
Follow-up, Mr. Hearn?
Yes, please. At present rates, I'm paying about $80 a year for the meter charge. And I've been paying something less than that, $32 a year, going back 20 years, perhaps. Can anyone tell me how, what percentage of the residential meters... That's residential rates, not business or commercial rates. How many meters, residential meters, have been replaced in the last 20 years?
Mr. Ryan, you have that one? I think this one has been asked before.
No.
I really don't have that number, Madam Moderator. But I would say, as far as residential meters, the actual meter body, they've probably all been changed. The MTUs, some have, some have not. We are experiencing a real supply chain thing, trying to get the new MTUs. But I would think the actual meter bodies would be, have all been replaced in the past 20 years.
Follow-up, Mr. Hearn?
I don't recall it being replaced in my house. But the point is, the committee told town meeting they should be replaced every 10 years when we voted for this. And it hasn't been done every 10 years. And it's just a question... The concern is that we promised one thing. Administration has delivered another. I guess we're not going to do this again. But here, we were told $670,000 is a water meter money. And yet, we were just told we're getting $1 million a year. Why aren't we spending $1 million on what it was promised for? That's the question. I don't really expect an answer.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hearn. Anything else on the motion? Seeing none, let's put it to a vote. All those in favor of amending the fiscal '24 Water and Sewer Budget by $670,000 for the purpose of operation of the Town of Norwood Municipal Water and Sewer System, water meter replacements? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries. All right. It is 10:12. And we still have about nine more motions, articles to go, that I don't think that we can finish by 10:30 or with a reasonable extension. However, is there a point of information, Ms. Bodenhoffer?
Point of information, it's just recently been brought to my attention that there are parent-teacher conferences Thursday night for the schools, I believe all the schools. So parents would have a conflict with Thursday night. But also, here at the high school, there will be parent-teacher conferences that would create a large conflict with parking. So I just wanted to make the body aware of that.
All right. So we're going to continue on in light of that to see if we can power through. And we'll see where we're at at 10:30, rather than having people actually try to park here on Thursday and also have conflicts with parent-teacher conferences. So stay with me, folks. Grab water if you have to. But let's move on to Article 13 on the composting pilot. Ms. Bodenhoffer.
Moved by the Finance Commission that the town appropriate the sum of $150,000 from free cash to pay the costs of entering into contract services for a composting pilot program.
All right. And seconded by Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly, you had talked about a presentation. But can you just paraphrase, maybe? Anything you'd like to say on the article?
Okay. So much for our presentation. I would like to acknowledge that this presentation that we were planning on presenting is also co-presented by Sustainability Commission. I know member Heather Olens has been nice enough to stay here for the whole meeting. And I will try to recap the presentation and entertain questions. And I'm sure there'll be questions that either I or Ms. Olens might be able to speak to. So very briefly, this warrant article is seeking $150,000 to support a pilot program for composting. The reason that I personally was interested in food composting as a program to test, to pilot here in Norwood, has to do with the rising cost of our waste management costs. You know, we are just entering into year one of renewal of our waste management costs for solid waste removal. And the costs have skyrocketed. Just you would have... I would have shown you a chart that basically is telling us that in FY '23, under our previous contract, we would have been paying $1.3 million for the removal of solid waste curbside every week. That's household pickup. In FY '28, it skyrockets to $2.3 million. So every year, we're seeing this very large escalation in solid waste removal. So from an economic benefit, composting is a means of diverting elements of... An element on the trash cycle that doesn't necessarily belong there and can be put to a more beneficial use. From a Sustainability Commission perspective, the Sustainability Commission has done a wonderful job identifying several areas of focus for making us a more sustainable community. Ms. Olens has actually chaired the Committee on Solid Waste, and she can chime in with input and answering any questions. But from sustainability perspective, you know, Massachusetts is running out of places to put its trash. And from an environmental perspective, the element of incineration of trash is not good environmentally. So basically, the idea here is we send about 6,300 tons of trash out to waste management every year and at a cost of $238 per ton and escalating over the next five years. So if we're able to, you know, look at an option for residents to divert some of that waste stream into a food composting program, we will do a couple of things. One is that we will perhaps, and I think this is the experience of some other towns have had, that we'll be able to reduce the amount of tonnage we're sending to waste management because we will be diverting that food compost to a composting system where it's organically turned into a useful material. How would we do that? We would partner with a firm, a well-established firm. I think Black Earth Composting, they have, I think, currently about 50 private subscribers in Norwood. We would seek to use the money for a pilot to pilot a program with Black Earth to increase that 50 to a number where we can get 500 or more people to participate in the weekly curbside pickup from Black Earth. John, if you can just pull up the compost bin that I dragged out of my house. And I do want... This is just the containers that you might see around this and surrounding towns. Food composted is saved in the kitchen by participants. I'm a resident, I'm a participant, and we don't... We take all the composted food material, including bones, fat, anything, you know, and throw it into a small container. At the end of the week, we're putting it out for Black Earth to collect. Basically, the ways that... And Black Earth is a company that currently has probably over 20 municipal partners participating in composting programs. So some of those towns use Black Earth as a, on a private preferred vendor perspective, where as the number of subscribers increases in a particular town, the rate per household for participating in that program goes down. So there are really nice volume discounts available. Other towns, like Watertown, actually have the town paying 100% of weekly composting. And they have reported in conversation with me that they are seeing reduction in tonnage to their waste. What we're trying to do is work with Black Earth to identify upwards of 500 people who would participate in a program. We can measure it. We'll take, we'll measure the impact or how much is being composted. It really is an effort to drive interest in composting. And we want to do that for about a 14-month period, at the end of which we can evaluate the success of the program, what went right, what could be improved. And from that point, we come back to the Board of Selectmen with a recommendation for how do we take this project, if we feel it's successful, to a larger scale in the town. So that is it in a nutshell. I'm going to pause here and see if I can address any questions myself. And Ms. Olens can also speak to this article.
Well, we do have one registered speaker. Mr. Donnelly, Mr. McFarland has registered to speak on this. Do you still want to speak on it, Mr. McFarland, or are you good?
Peter McFarland, District Four, and a member of the Sustainability Commission. The only thing I'd like to add to Mr. Donnelly's presentation is it's estimated about 25% of our household waste is food scraps. So it is a significant portion of the waste that's being sent out to waste management at the time. So that's the thing about to rethink what you're doing. So compost, you know, sending food scraps to be composted saves a lot of money in tonnage as far as what goes to waste management. So, thank you.
Ms. Neil Rizzo?
Katie Neil Rizzo, District Two. I am in favor of this as well. I participated in a trial with the Sustainability Commission earlier in the year, last February for the month. We composted using a compost, a kitchen counter composting bin that I changed from the DPW about four years ago when we started composting at my house. We use most of the compost to supplement the soil in our vegetable and fruit garden because we're privileged enough to have that green space to grow flowers in our own food, and it's awesome. In February, when we don't typically go out to the compost bin a lot because it's frozen, we don't compost as much. So last February, during that four-week period, we composted 12 pounds or diverted 12 pounds of food waste from the trash into the compost bin. We waited for the Sustainability Commission's project that we were participating in. It's really easy. My lazy kids do it. It's fine. My grandmother has done it. She's 101. She still does it. It's not extra work. It makes your trash not smell as bad. And most of all, it takes a lot of weight. Think of all your heavy food, fruit... Think of all your heavy food, fruits, vegetables, out of your trash, and our trash costs are going to be skyrocketing. This will save the town a lot of money. So, I'm all in favor, and I'd love to see the town taking a sustainability step like this.
Thank you. Mr. Brody?
Steve Brody, District Four. Can someone please explain how this pilot program will work, and how people are going to be getting to sign up for the program, please?
Mr. Donnelly, you want to take that?
Yes. So, we're partnering with a company called Black Earth Compost. Again, they are a company that is well experienced in this endeavor. So, what we would do in working with Black Earth is that, upon approval of this article, hopefully, we will bring Black Earth in. They provided us a proposal in terms of how they would see the program unfold. In terms of reaching out to the pilot group, you know, we would have to get a, more or less, a marketing and education campaign out there. People who are interested in piloting, being part of the pilot, would register in the Black Earth site. From that information, Black Earth would come back to us and say, here are the folks that have indicated they are interested in participating in this pilot. From there, we would need to designate a, our rate for that we would pay Black Earth for compost pickup is going to be not just dependent upon the number of participants, but also density of the population that's in the pilot. So, the more pilot, more pilot participants who are in a particular square mile area, for example, would bring the rate down. The more number that we can raise up, 500 and above, the more the volume rate for our charge will also come down. But we would work this detail out with Black Earth, get a communication out to the, to the, to the residential households, and they could go on the Black Earth site, indicate that they are interested. And from that, we have some data that we can work with Black Earth to define routes and participation in the most effective private area for the compost pilot to take place.
In the back? Right there.
Hi. Hi, Katie Button, District Nine. Will this opportunity be available to residents of Norwood who reside in single-family dwellings? I'm sorry, who do not reside in single-family dwellings? So, in other words, apartment complexes or multifamily homes?
They do support multifamily homes. I mean, it'd be more difficult getting into very large condominium complexes where, you know, there are dumpsters for a collection of trash and whatever. But we could, I mean, there, Black Earth tells us that they actually have apartment-sized, you've seen the compost bin that John just displayed a moment ago. There are also apartment-sized containers that Black Earth can provide as well. So, the opportunity would be open. Yes?
Great. Thank you.
Behind there?
Chris Jordan, District, excuse me, District Four. Does the town already provide, or has provided in the past, compost barrels from the DPW or the Winter Street Lot or another organization in town?
Well, I think, I'll let, Ms. Groh would like to address the question, and I'll also add to it if necessary.
There we go. All right. Amanda Groh, District Seven. So, the DPW does provide at least more than one type of composting barrel, but the difference is, those are backyard composting. Your backyard compost does not get hot enough to process certain types of compost materials, such as bones, or such as, if you've ever seen like the single-use disposable plates and spoons and things that say compostable on them, those are only compostable through more industrial composting processes, such as what Black Earth has. And so, that's the difference, is this program is going to allow people to compost materials that would otherwise not break down in just a standard backyard compost, which is what the DPW's been providing for folks. I have one of those myself, actually, in my backyard, and I can tell you, there is even very thoroughly composting, there's still a ton of stuff that you can't put in it.
Okay. Thank you. A couple of follow-ups to that. Does the Winter Street facility have the ability to take compost?
Mr. Donnelly?
So, there are some differences. Right now, the DPW does have a drop-off compost program, and they do some production of compost. The issue or the difference between the curbside program through Black Earth is, the amount or the kind of things that you can compost under Black Earth is far larger than what the town will accept for the composting done at the Winter Street facilities. Ms. Groh just mentioned a couple of them. You can't put animal fat, animal bones in the compost for the town of Norwood, but in Black Earth proposal, they will take all that, and they will, there's a large list of food items that can be compostable, and it's larger than what exists in the current programs under the, that are driven by the town. And the town operates a drop-off program, not a curbside household pickup program.
All right. And last one. Can somebody tell me the difference between the cost associated with the green barrel pickup and the yellow barrel pickup on an annual basis?
Mr. Mazuka, are you going to take that?
Yeah.
Or Mr. Ryan's going to take that?
Madam Moderator, so, on an annual basis, we're, you know, the green top trash barrels is just that solid waste, and we do about 6,300 tons per year at $238 a ton. The yellow top is recyclables. We do about 2,000 tons a year, and I'm not sure, I want to say it's around 260 or 270, roughly, for the recyclables per ton.
All right. Without pulling out the calculator, can we, I mean, do numbers off the top of my head, off the top of your head, as far as cost, not tonnage, and then each?
Okay. So, I'm being told by the Finance Commission, which I trust tremendously here, 1.5 million for the trash, 6,300 tons. Okay, 2,000 times 270. 540, 540,000 for the recyclables.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Homwood?
I think this is, I'm sorry. Debbie Homwood, District Three. I'm sorry, I know we all want to go home, but I think this is really important, because we have bins that we bought from the DPW, which is backyard. Your grandmother did it, because we all used to compost. I grew up in the country, you always compost. There's got to be a will to do this. And to spend $150,000 of taxpayer money, as much as I would be willing to do it, if we weren't making more plastic and driving more cars around to pick it up, I don't know that there's a will to do it, to spend my tax dollars on it. We can compost not everything up at the dump. We can put our black bins in the backyard, which we've had for years. We had, you've got to be willing to do this, and I am not willing to spend another $150,000 for more plastic containers that I don't feel are going to work. If you really want to compost, you care about Mother Earth, you'd call Black Earth and do it yourself. That's just my thought, and I think saving Mother Earth is more important than the 150, but you're not going to do either.
All right. Way in the back.
Denise Kylie, District Four. So, I'm a Black Earth compost customer, a paying customer, and I've done this since we adopted here in Norwood, or they offered it. And what I can say is, it makes a huge difference in your household as far as composting goes. I tried the old way, where you do it in your backyard. I tried putting compost down in the town near the DPW, and what I found is that the bugs were out of control. You'd go put your, put your bag in down at the DPW, and you would be swarmed with flies. You tried to go down to the landfill to do it, you always can't get there on time. Doing Black Earth compost is the easiest way of getting the stuff out of your house. I just have a small bin. I take the bag out every day, Saturday morning, they take it away. It is easy, it is good for the earth, and if we all did it, it would take a lot of solid waste out of the trash. I can tell you that I also do it in town, in Boston, and we use, I can't think of the company, anyway. They make a bio-slurry out of, out of the compost, and it's actually used for electricity and heating, and it would be nice to see if we could do something like that at some point, because there are bigger facilities that actually do make electricity out of it.
Thank you. Right next, next door.
Madam Moderator, Amanda Rafi, District Nine. I don't think that we're giving Bob Donnelly's, this whole motion, any kind of real attention. I think we're rushing this. I feel like we missed the presentation, and I feel like we're not getting through to everybody. So, in respect, I would just really like to table this motion and maybe come back to this. We're past 10:30, Madam Moderator. So, I'm just wondering if maybe we could table this and bring this back to life on Monday, since we can't do Thursday. We still have another nine motions. So, that's just my, my thought, Madam Moderator.
Well, we're going to finish up this article. Whether we're going to be able to finish town meeting tonight, that's a different, a different story, but we can't table when we're in the middle of an article. All right. Ms. Sibling Dunn?
Kate Sibling Dunn, District One, still. I just wanted to mention, I happen to, no, I'm not sure if Bob mentioned it, but if we get a certain amount of people, I think there's a potential for the high school to also be picked up, which would be a huge relief for the town as well. Bob, could you speak to that, if we can get folks signed up? Which I think would be easier to do than folks might think.
Madam Moderator, if you please, John, if you can pull up Slide 15, just so we can get some representative municipalities that are also undertaking composting with Black Earth. In, in response to Ms. Sibling Dunn's question, one of the ways that you do scale up a composting program to take advantage of volume discount from Black Earth for the number of households is that as you increase your number of households, the weekly rate per household will drop. To your point about other composting programs, Black Earth would tell you that they do do composting pickup at municipal buildings and schools for many of the other communities, sort of on a separate path, if you will. It certainly would be an opportunity going forward once we get through our pilot. Wouldn't it be really part of the pilot program? The pilot program is really focused on households to generate interest in numbers that we can bring this program forward on a, on a more sustainable basis. I wanted to bring these, these cities and towns up, just to reference that of these, of these communities that you list, that I listed here, only three have a town-supported or subsidized compost pickup program. Watertown, Manchester, they are two towns that are 100% paid for the composting program through the tax levy. That's, and Ipswich is an 85% town, 15% resident sharing. Every one of these other communities are on a preferred vendor basis. So, I'm taking, for example, the city of Newton, which currently has 2,600 participants. I pay, as a Black Earth customer, I pay approximately $230 a year for the, every week pickup from Black Earth. In Newton, given their, given their density, and that they have preferred vendor rates, resident pays 100% of the cost, but they've driven down the cost of the, of the program through participation. So, they started at, they start with a large base of people, they are at 120 per household versus to 230 that the residential private person would pay. At 3,000, the rate goes to 120 per household. At 5,000, it would go to 90. That's just to give an indication of the advantages of volume discounting. I put that out there because the basis, basic theme of this program is to generate interest and get people excited about a program that really is geared to diverting stuff out of our trash system, which we are now paying $238 per ton every, every, every year, every ton that we're picked up is 238. It's rising to over 350 in FY '28. If we can generate interest through this pilot, you know, we would be able to really come back at the end of the pilot, in my perspective, with, we have a solid group of people, of participants, we have a rate that will work, we think that 500, 600 people still will maintain their interest, and they would, we would not put forward a subsidy going after the pilot, but rather generate enough interest, drive that rate down, so that, like these other towns, we'll have a lot of folks who will be participating as Black Earth customers, and they will, at the same time, be able to assist in the sustainability goals of reducing our solid waste tonnage, and we will have some economic benefit from not putting as much stuff into our, our trash system today. I hope that kind of paints a picture where I think this pilot would be going at the end of the day.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Mr. Hall?
I'm not sure what would happen if we did a quorum check right now. I'm not sure I like the chances. I'd like to speak in favor of the position of the lady who said that our decision to plunge ahead on this item has pretty much killed off the strength of the discussion we could have had. So, we are where we are. What should we do now? I have a couple suggestions. One is, I'd say vote yes. This is a pilot program. Pilot means you go and see how it works and learn whether it's closer to a very promising start, but only a start, or closer to a noble idea that really isn't worth going full-scale on. I may think it'll be at one end, some of the people who spoke can think it'll be at the other end, but either way, finding out is worth $150,000 in my mind. And the second thing is, I would suggest that arrangements are made to have Bob Donnelly's presentation put up on the town website with instructions to people to send in questions and comments, so we can have a town-wide conversation that we might have had here, but are not going to have time to do. I also would like to speak in favor of continuing, if we continue on Monday, for the reasons cited.
Mr. Connolly?
Hold the question, Madam Moderator.
Second. All right. All in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Aye.
All right. We are going to the actual motion, which is for the town to appropriate the sum of $150,000 from free cash for paying the cost of the pilot composting program as outlined here. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
All right. Motion carries. So, folks, here's the deal. I'm going to recommend, there is no way we're going to finish at a timely hour. I've been given information from a representative of the schools that if we start at 7:30 on Thursday, the conferences will be over, for the most part, parking will be available, and there will be no conflict, rather than going into Thanksgiving week. So, I will entertain, and Mr. Mazuka, let me just ask you the question. Logistically, can we start at 7:30? Is there any reason why we can't?
I think we can, if you so declare. I may need you here at 6:30 to start the meeting and recess until 7:30, but yes.
What? Is there a school committee meeting on? Hold on. Ms... Ms., I can't hear you, Ms. Stewart. Do we think that parking will be okay at 7:30, though? They'll be dwindling down at, by eight, right? By 7:30? All right. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna give it a go. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn until 7:30 on Thursday. Mr. Connolly?
Don't move.
Ms. Smith, seconding. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? See you Thursday at 7:30.